It's all pretty much stopped.
As Mayor of the City of Stanton, I call the work session meeting to order for July 22, 2021. It is now 5:30 and the first item on the agenda is a consideration of work session and regular meeting agendas. I'll entertain a motion for approval.
Madam Mayor.
Vice Mayor Robertson.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the work session agenda and the regular meeting agenda with the following changes. As to the work session agenda, I'd like to delete number four and move the discussion and consideration of said item four to number E in the regular meeting agenda.
Okay, there's a motion on the floor. Is there a second?
Madam Mayor.
Councilman Claffey.
I'll second that.
All right, we have a second. Any further discussion?
Yes, Madam Mayor, I would just like to explain why I had recommended that we do this. The villages, the item before item four, item three, which is the update on the villages' master plan, required additional time than what's scheduled. And Mr. Blair was kind enough to advise me that we could move the discussion of the animals and foul items since that is a housekeeping item under item E and therefore provide additional 10 minutes for the villages' master plan update.
Okay, so we're going to have the discussion and the consideration under item E with the regular meeting per the motion. All right, any further discussion? Hearing none. Ms. Zinni, please call the roll.
Mayor Oaks.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Robertson.
Aye.
Ms. Mead.
Mr. Claffey.
Aye.
Ms. Dull.
Aye.
Ms. Darby.
Aye.
Mr. Holmes. Motion carries.
All right, thank you. The next item is item two, a discussion of home stay properties, short-term rentals in the city of Stanton. Ms. Bowery, go ahead.
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor. This was a request made by council members Mead and Dull. So we added it to this work session agenda for this evening. We don't have a formal presentation, but we did send to council in advance some data that was provided by Maggie Reagan, our Commissioner of Revenue, who is present tonight. And she will be presenting this data shortly. But before she does that, I would like to invite council member Mead and then council member Dull to make a few statements about this agenda item from their perspective. And so then after they do that, I would invite Ms. Reagan to come up and make her presentation.
All right, thank you. Chums.
I'm like, her mic is on?
It's not on.
Technical difficulty. Hold on just a minute.
Sit down. There we go.
Doug, yeah. That was so loud, they could hear me.
I received inquiries from a number of folks in the community about the, what they're experiencing in terms of the lack of apartments, affordable apartments and homes in the city. And one of the issues they felt was important was the number of homes being converted to short-term rentals, Airbnb's, that sort of thing, feeling that those short-term rentals were driving up the cost of renting to many of these folks who are younger, they're in, starting new businesses, they're, they are, they have entry-level jobs, and they really depend on having affordable housing in Stanton. And so that was my reason for requesting that the item be on the agenda.
Councilor Dole.
I too had gotten requests and got an email that described a problem in a citizen not being able to find a place to buy because they were getting turned into Airbnb's and various, you know, problems with affordable housing. So I requested this be on the agenda as an educational opportunity for council to start looking at the short-term rental data that we can get. And also maybe to have it become part of a bigger discussion and project to look at all the things that could be affecting our ability to provide affordable housing, whether it's apartments or starter homes. I think we're okay on the high end. Nobody's complaining to me they can't find a million-dollar house. But, and just to look at all the factors, because maybe there are some things we can do, whether it's looking at our zoning, or whether it's using some federal funds to incentivize development of vacant lots, who knows? But this was just a start for me, for us to get some information from Maggie Reagan.
All right, welcome, Ms. Reagan.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, members of council. Their request just kind of pulled together a little bit of data on the home stays, so you could take a look at it and draw your own conclusions, really. If you look at the graph that I provided, that's basically the darker bar is the, the home stays coming into the market, and then the lighter bar that you see from 2017 on, those going out of the market. One of the things with tracking home stays is that it's a very fluid activity. So it could be that we could have 55 one day and 62 the next, because people can pull them on and off the market at their own discretion. But mainly, we have two categories, the Airbnb and the VRBO, that people are participating, and a lot of them participate in both platforms. The difference being that VRBO is only for whole-house rentals, and Airbnb can be anything from a single bedroom all the way up to a whole house. With VRBO, it cannot be owner-occupied, and with Airbnb, it can be either owner-occupied or non-occupied. So you have, the people who are participating in VRBO usually are participating on Airbnb as well, but not necessarily vice versa. So as of today, we have 62 units that are licensed and actively participating, and that have their short-term, what we call the home stay permit, in place as well as their business license. If you'll recall, in our code, occupancy tax applies to lodging participants that can lodge four or more persons. So anybody who has a place on Airbnb that's one bed and one bed only does not participate in the collection of transient occupancy tax, those who have space for four or more persons do. As a result of that, we have currently 35 hosts who are collecting and remitting occupancy tax and 22 who are not. Most of our traditional B&Bs are on both of the platforms, and some of our hotels are also on the platforms. The hotels usually deal through a third-party intermediary and don't book directly on Airbnb, but have another intermediary that goes in between the hotel and Airbnb and then to the guests, which is altogether confusing. Their prices on the platforms range anywhere from $35 a night, which is for a single bedroom in someone's occupied home, up to $348 a night for a whole-house rental. But the average is about 117 currently. And we also provided you, I think, with a map that has kind of, so you can get just an overall look at where these folks are operating. And you can see it's throughout the entire city. But there is a concentration more towards downtown Newtown places that people can walk to our restaurants and theaters and so forth, which makes sense. And there are more of the multi-unit listings in those areas. So I've got four listings where there are multiple units within the same dwelling. So on West Beverly Street, Calorama Street, Coulter Street, and there's one more, I can't recall off the top of my head, there are places where they've got a whole house that's broken into apartments, and all of the apartments are listed on the platform. But that is a pretty limited number of multi-unit listings as far as, as a comparison to other localities is concerned. So that's pretty much the data, and I'm happy to answer any questions that you might have. I think you can see from the, from the graph, obviously last year in 2020, we had more people totally jump off the platforms because they didn't want people in their homes. Most of those were the owner-occupied places. And we're seeing a few people come back on so far this year, but we really haven't had a whole lot of activity in 2021. We currently have four or five people in the pipeline that have started the process but have not gotten everything, all their ducks in a row at this point. So what questions might I answer for you?
Vice Mayor Robertson.
Maggie, you made the statement that we, as a community, have maybe less than other communities. Do you have any insight as to, is there specific reasons, or should we be doing something different?
Well, I think we have a fewer multi-unit properties, is what I'm saying. I think you find more in, like in Harrisonburg and Charlottesville and the college towns, there are a lot more multi-unit properties that are on the market there than we have here. I don't know if there's a specific reason for it or just density.
Ms. Reagan, so it's my understanding that with a home stay, the stay cannot be any longer than 30 days.
Right.
However, the frequency can be as many as you would like.
Yes.
So does that mean after 30 days, you could leave for 24 hours and then come back?
Technically, but we don't have anybody that's really participating at that level. The way occupancy, what's considered a transient occupancy in the code, regardless of whether it has to do with a hotel, a short-term rental, or any type of rental, that's really kind of a definition of anything beyond 30 days. You become permanent and not transient, and that's not allowed. So we don't have any situations generally where we have folks that are doing that and participating. I can tell you of two specific instances where someone wanted to do that for like a relocation type thing, and that host pulled off the platform, rented that person on a long-term basis, and then put back on the platform after they left. And we don't have any, in our code, any interaction in terms of business license with long-term renters. That's not a licensable activity in Stanton. That's something that was decided back in the 70s, I believe.
Interesting. Right, are there any additional?
Is there a restriction as far as parking and stuff like that goes?
No, there used to be, when we developed the ordinance for zoning and revenue that was presented to in your packet, we specifically excluded the requirement to have off-street parking for Airbnb, for short-term rentals. I know I say Airbnb a lot because it's kind of ubiquitous.
Councilor Claffey.
Maggie, is our annual registration fee comparable to other localities around?
It's the max that's allowed by code, and that's, yeah, that's pretty much what everybody does.
Yeah, thank you.
Councilor Dole.
I read that the Virginia Beach Council put a
They did.
Hole on their, anybody, so they're not letting anybody do a short-term rental.
From this point on, right.
Do you know anything about why they did it? I mean, obviously, they must have thought they had too many.
So, the conversations that I've had with them, and we're in the middle of working on a situation because the code changes on September 1st with, first with respect to the sales and use tax and transient occupancy. So I've been dealing with those localities over the past couple of weeks on that. And so Virginia Beach Council, it was put to them by some residents that they were basically trying to avoid the continuation of the high-dollar beach within proximity of the beach homes that were being rented out as party houses. And so they wanted to kind of, you know, reduce that activity. So they're limiting, from my understanding, to the Sandbridge area, which is much more residential. And I don't, I haven't spent a lot of time down there, but my understanding is, is that Sandbridge is not a place where you go out, walk into restaurants and bars and things like that. So the activity tends to be more family-oriented. They have not addressed, to my knowledge, any of the people who are already in the programs in Virginia Beach, but I'm assuming that with their, what they passed being silent to that, that those people will be allowed to continue their activity. They're just trying to limit activity from this point on. And I really don't know if there's going to be any change to that or not. I think it's kind of a too-soon-to-tell, honestly.
Do you think that they'll be putting something in place, like, could, could council, because I'm sure somebody will sue them shortly if they haven't already, but could there be limitations? Could the council put limitations on the use of a short-term rental and put it in that way? Not, not allowing Airbnb's, but not allowing?
In other words, you're saying, I don't know, to be honest with you. That's probably more of a Mr. Blair question than it is to me. But I think that, what I can tell you is that the platforms allow residents, neighbors, localities, and others to complain when there are uses that are outside of their, what they have specified. In other words, that you can go in and say, you know, this person is repetitively disrupting our neighborhood and complain about that. And they can be delisted, I think is the category or the term that they use. And so there's a process for that type of thing, but I don't know, and again, Mr. Blair could probably answer as far as what council is limited to doing, but I think there are ways to, to avoid those types of things, but not in a push-down manner, more in a reactionary.
Have you ever seen any data on any, any analysis that anybody's done on what is an okay number percentage-wise? Like if you had 1,000
You mean a density-type thing?
Residents, is 10% like okay? Do people have a problem at 40 or anything like that?
No, I really haven't seen anything that speaks to that. Mr. Blair, did you want to jump in or?
Well, I'm happy to, but Ms. Mead, you have a question, so I'll defer to after.
So do you have a feel, our hotels report their occupancy levels on a regular basis. From your data, do you have any way of determining for these B&Bs and VRBOs, are they 50% occupied? Are they?
Well, that's one of the issues that, as commissioners, as a group that we have with Airbnb is that they refuse to share any data with us whatsoever. So these, when the transient occupancy tax is reported, it's being reported to us by the host, not by Airbnb. So we don't have any method for extracting that information other than knowing that, you know, it's 7% of their gross receipts. You can look at their, you know, what price they're charging on the platform and kind of extrapolate your own data from that. But there were not provided with anything to see, you know, what sort of occupancy rates, like the reports that we receive from the hotels, too.
So we really don't have a feel for what the demand for these properties are based on how they're rented out?
All I can tell you, Ms. Mead, is that it's, you know, anecdotally, that we have some that are occupied on a very regular basis and some that are more sporadic.
I was just looking at the rates, the range of $35 a night to $348 a night. And if they were occupied 30 days out of the month, that would compare to, at the low end, about $1,000 a month, and at the high end, $10,000 a month. And if we knew, if we had a better feel for what the demand for these properties was, it would, it would tell us, I think, more about whether it's driving, whether that's driving a decrease in apartment rents.
I can tell you, you know, again, this is anecdotally from my experience, that people, there's a mixture here of people who have taken their property out of long-term and put it into short-term with the expectation or the hope that it will bring them more money to have it on the short-term rental program. Almost always, when someone pulls it out of the program, it's, it didn't live up to my expectations. And I can, I can honestly say that there are a small number of listings that are very popular and that are rented on a regular basis. And I do think that for sometimes, that's why you see them come in and go out of the program. Others, I would say there are also those that are, oh, if I pick up a few extra bucks off of space I'm not using, that's, you know, it's land yap, as we call it in Louisiana. But it's not, they're not doing it to pay their bills. You've got, you've got a wide range there.
Councilor Holmes.
Say that if it's less than four, they don't, they don't have to report, or?
There, as far as the transient occupancy tax, I've got 22 currently that are not collecting because they are, in the code, the transient occupancy tax applies to lodging establishments that can support four or more lodgers. So if you have, if you're only have one bed or two, you know, and you're saying, I can only accommodate two people, then it doesn't apply to you. And that, that's how the code has been for a number of years. That is something, is up to you all.
Councilor Claffey.
I've read some of these articles about party houses and police, police presence required. I mean, have we ever had an issue in Stanton?
We have not. I haven't, we have not had any complaints about any of our Airbnb's.
Thank you.
And, and again, maybe there's somebody in a uniform that might have a little bit more information than me, but I haven't, that I have heard of.
Yeah.
Councilor Claffey, are you planning on becoming the party house?
You know, not here. I thought I'd go to California.
Okay, all right. All right, Mr. Blair.
Yes, to answer Councilor Dole's question, a couple of things to follow up on the commissioner's remarks. The existing Airbnb's in Virginia Beach would still be allowed to operate as non-conforming uses. One of the interesting things that I read through their ordinance when we were preparing for this, is that they also have a provision that if you can define a community within the city, 75% of property owners within that community petition the city council, they may establish a new district to allow Airbnb's based on that 75% threshold. To answer your question about regulations, I think the way, if the council had any interest in that, would be through your zoning code, and probably it would be through making these subject to a special use permit, if that's the way you wanted to go, because then you could individualize the conditions for the specific property. That's, you know, because I'm sure, as we've heard from the commissioner, you've got a variety and diversity of different properties doing this. Probably it wouldn't be a one-size-fits-all rule.
Are there any other questions or comments? Thank you. That was very informative.
Thanks, Maggie.
Anytime. Thank you.
Appreciate it. Thank you.
Right, so the next item.
Before we, I'm done with Maggie Reagan.
Okay, thanks, Maggie.
I would like for us to consider, this is one piece of a bigger problem that we seem to be having with affordable housing. So I would like, you know, to see some emphasis, some, some more thoughts and analysis and any data we can get on that kind of thing so that we can figure out if we can help fix that problem.
Sounds good. We can have that on a future agenda. All right, well, we are ahead of schedule. And the next item, item four, the discussion of City Council Procedure Memorandum Number Three amendments.
Let me see. No.
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm skipping right over. Number three, the discussion of the revised master plan of the villages of Stanton, my apologies. So, well, never mind.
Go ahead, Mr. Rhodes.
Thank you. Good evening, Madam Mayor, City Council members. On your regular agenda for this evening, for your consideration, is an amendment to the master plan for the villages of Stanton. And at this time, Robin Miller will give an overview of this development and of his proposed changes.
Welcome, Mr. Miller. I was not trying to skip over you, even though I am ready for a break already. But thank you for coming and welcome.
Thank you, Madam Chairwoman and members of council. It's a pleasure to be here. Let me start with a little background of how I got to Stanton. It's back in 2003, almost 19 years ago, I was giving a talk on historic tax credits in Winchester. And the then-current mayor, John Avoli, happened to be in the audience. And he said, have you ever been to Stanton? And I said, well, yeah, I go through Stanton twice a week. I'm driving from Richmond to Tennessee, where I'm from, and I had a business. I drive down on Monday, come back on Friday. And he goes, no, 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 have you ever been to downtown Stanton? And I said, well, no, I haven't. He said, well, let me buy you lunch. Long story short, a couple of weeks later, I came to see John Avoli, and he took me to lunch. And as I drove in Route 250, Richmond Road, and looked to the left and saw which the project, now the villages, but at the time, was a pretty dilapidated-looking ex-prison with 10-foot chain-link fence in Concertina on the top and covered with vines and weeds. But unfortunately, I'm either blessed or cursed with the ability to see through that. And I immediately fell in love with that campus. And here I am. I first appeared before council in 2004. My partner, Dan Gekker, was instrumental in working with the city council and the city manager and economic development director at the time to allow the transfer from the Commonwealth of Virginia to the city of Stanton, I think for a dollar or zero. And then we came and competed here with four other developers in response to a request for, for performance, RFP, for, to become the master developer for this property. We hired a firm out of Washington, DC, one of the top landscape architects. This master plan on the right there is based on that. Underneath the color code is the original 2005 plan. We presented here at council, it was accepted. We did win the competition. We then proceeded to spend at least a year negotiating the zoning and almost an equal amount of time negotiating the agreement with the city. One of the concerns of the city was that we would cut and run, that we would get in here and discover that we bit off more than we could chew, and we would disappear into the sunset. Well, that hasn't happened. I bought a house in Stanton. I bought a house in Stanton 17 years ago. I spend more than half my time here, and I'm probably going to change my voting district to Stanton here as soon as I find some time. I love Stanton. I don't have to be developing, but I love the old buildings. It's my passion. And one of the provisions that was put in at that time was that we prepare a master plan, and if we chose to change that master plan in a significant way, we would come forward through the planning commission to city council, which is what we're doing now. The original plan was approved in 2005. I believe the First Amendment was in 2015, if I recall correctly. And the issue is what's in yellow on this picture here. This is with stage five. And, and to be honest, at the time, the then-city engineer, James, wanted us to say exactly what we're going to do on every phase of the project. And I said, James, I really don't know, but this would be 20 years by the time we get there, and we just don't know what we're going to do. So we left stage five kind of blank. And he said, okay, well, now we want to develop stage five, and this is why I'm here today. Now, can I advance this and see what, oh, there we go. Okay, I'm not going to go into all this. It's in your package, you can read it. This is a progress report that I gave to the Economic Development Authority, and then again, the Planning Commission. Bottom line is, in Stanton, Dan Gekker, my partner and I, have developed to date almost in assessed value, which is not necessarily the same as cost. We've, in 2020, the properties we've redeveloped totaled almost $30 million. In 2020, that property generated about $285,000 in real estate taxes to the city of Stanton. So we are, we are here, and we're here for quite a while. This chart right here has some of the numbers on it. If you add in the lodging, and if you look at the cost versus the assessed value, it was just about $40 million in cost. And if you add the lodging and meals tax for the Blackburn Inn last year, my eyesight is good enough, $342,000 in taxes that we generated. Most of you have seen the Bindery condominiums, the Brookdale condominiums on the right side off of Greenville Avenue, the lofts at the village, 38 apartments. We did the five, the four houses on Greenville Avenue. Those are all completed and sold. We used historic tax credits on all these. None of this development would have been possible without historic tax credits. And I was actually on a call yesterday with Senator Kane and Senator Warner's office about expanding the federal historic tax credit to make it more user-friendly and make it better for small cities particularly like Stanton. So I hope that they make that change. The Blackburn Inn, I hope all of you have been there, 49 rooms. Total cost was about $9.5 million. Taxes in 2020 was about $38,000. And our most recent completion was the Conference Center. Hope most of you have been there. We're hosting HIFIS on Saturday nights this month there for the Hootenanny. We have had multiple events there. Lower right corner is our spa, which is super neat. If you haven't been to the spa, it's for not only ladies, but gentlemen can go there, too. I've been many times myself. Then Beverly Hotel, not at the villages, but, you know, candidly, I was not looking to do the Beverly Hotel. We were leaned on by some city staff to please, please come down and do this. We did, we bid right here for it, and I think we paid $185,000, which was about $185,000 too much. Once we got into it, it was a mess. I'm an engineer, I knew it was a mess, but it was much, much worse than I thought. We turned it into 38, I'm sorry, 28 residential units, two commercial spaces. The last commercial space, hopefully we'll be finished within a month. It's the new bakery, Crumble, going up on the corner there. So we took what was a eyesore and terribly poor-conditioned building. Candidly, in all seriousness, if we hadn't gotten in there, that building would not have stood. It would probably be down by now or shortly in the future. It turned out really, really well, we are very proud of it. Of course, we started off with the old Y condominiums, that was finished in 2005 while we were still negotiating with the city to, to get the villages. Now, the specific project we're looking at now is what, on the map of the, the old prison, it was called the Utility Building, so we're keeping that name in the upper-left corner. It's that simple-looking white building. It's 170 feet long by 40 feet wide. We plan to turn that into 20 apartments. They will be small, one-bedroom and efficiency apartments. We know that housing is needed in Stanton. Every single rental property we have is full, and we have a wait list. So that's the main reason we're building this, even though we're not getting historic tax credits on this particular building because it wasn't deemed old enough. But we're not tearing the building down. We are going to save the building and convert it into 20 apartments. Stage five, this is a proposal on the map there on the bottom, on the lower left, on the left side, you see two buildings with a parking lot. This is a conceptual plan. Actually, we're meeting with Ballzer tomorrow, we're fine-tuning it. But the Utility Building is the second from the right, that's the existing building. The building, I mean, second from the left. The building on the far left does not exist. That is a proposed new construction, which would also be 20 apartments, approximately the same size, would be all one-bedroom apartments. And then ultimately, we hope to extend the road up to the top of the hill. The picture in the upper-left is a view from the top of the hill, it's a spectacular view. And probably the, the, well, the best view at the villages because you can see 360 degrees. So our hope is that we can finish up these 40 apartments, and then in the not-too-distant future, move on up the road and build some more new dwelling units. What we put there, candidly, we don't know. The market will dictate. We're showing four buildings. Those could be townhomes, they could be condos, they could be apartments, they could be large apartments, they could be small apartments. We don't know what we're going to put there yet until, until we, we get a little farther along. Some other things we're doing there, summer stage at the, at the Blackburn, we have it on Friday nights, and we're having another concert tomorrow night. I hope you all can come if you haven't. It's turned out really, really well, we're getting good crowds there. And this is a dream, we haven't really done this yet, but in one of the buildings, we're, we're hopeful that we can do a hydroponic farming of some type. And I don't know anything about farming, but we're doing some research, we hope we can do that. So that's what we're doing now at the villages, and I request that you approve the plan to the master plan so that we can move forward with this project. I'll be glad to answer any questions. Yes, ma'am?
Counselor Mead.
Yeah, I've talked to a couple of people who live in the Bindery, and they're all pleased with this development and pleased to see what you've got planned. But one issue they raised was the issue of traffic. And I realize that, because I don't see an entrance or exit other than the, the two that you have in place on Richmond Avenue and Greenville. And so they're concerned about, as you add 40 apartments in this first phase and then an unknown number of additional apartments, what the impact on traffic will be and, and how you might plan to address that.
Okay, good question. I live in Richmond now, I'm a licensed, was a licensed professional engineer, I've since retired my license. I would say Stanton does not have a traffic problem, and we don't have a problem now. The addition of those properties, I just do not think it will be a problem in any way, shape, or form. If you look at, we do have some problems sometimes driving through town with the streetlights and all. One of the issues that was agreed to by the city in 2005 was that if we needed it, the city would install a stoplight where Village Drive hits Richmond Road. We're not there yet, but when we get there, I certainly hope that the city will step up and, and install that.
Excellent.
Right, Counselor Holmes.
Yes, these, the 40 apartments you're going to build first, what's going to be the, roughly, the rent on those?
Well, we haven't set the rent because we don't have the cost yet, but they will probably range from 300 to 900, maybe more. We have one large two-bedroom in the current version, so that'll probably be 1,200. This is what I would call workforce housing. You know, people talk about affordable housing, that, that's a very nebulous term. Ours, you, you do have to have a job to, and you do have to be able to prove that you have a job, and you have to have decent credit in order to, to move into one of our apartments, say, our market rate. We're not using low-income tax credits as many people do, this is strictly market rate.
Counselor Dole.
I've got a question and a comment. Do I recall correctly that one of, at least one of the bike pedestrian plans includes bike paths through or next to or through your property?
Yes, that is not in stage five, that's farther to the south, kind of near where the barn is now. And that would be coming, I mean, if, if you were riding a bike, about the only way I can see, if you come down the, the access road off of Statler Boulevard behind the Kroger Shopping Center, that would be the most likely place to come. And then somewhere in there, we don't have a road in there. I'd love for the city to come in and put a road in there so we could have a bike trail on it, but right now, we do not have a road there.
I think there's something in a plan.
There is. There certainly is.
And then my other question is with the, with the potential for hydroponic farming, would you grow real tomatoes? Because that's crucial to my support of this plan.
I, I will admit, I will have to say, I know nothing about farming. What I want to do is save the buildings. In order to save the buildings, we have to find a use. Those, there's three buildings that the rooms are so tiny, they're like seven by eight or seven by nine, that we can't turn them into apartments, we can't turn them into hotel rooms, there's no demand for offices. So I am at my wit's end on what to use the building for. If any of you have any ideas, I say this in all seriousness, I would love to hear them. Because in order to redo the building, which will probably cost somewhere between $1 and $2 million, I've got to convince a bank to loan me that money. And for me to do that, they've got to be convinced that whatever I'm going to put in that building will continue to pay the rent. And so the hydroponic farming is a goal and a dream, not proven yet to be economically feasible, but I hope we can make it work.
Any other questions or comments? Well, Mr. Miller, I think this council needs to do an inspection of the spa.
Please come by, we'd love to have you.
This is very exciting for the city of Stanton, so thank you.
Thank you very much.
All right, now with that, we are now on break, and we will return at 6:30. All right, now with that, we are now on break and we will return at 6:30.[176.73]
Thank you for doing that.
Okay, we are back in session. Now, the next item is item number four, a discussion of City Council Procedure Memorandum Number Three Amendments. Ms. Leslie Beauregard.
Thank you. Mr. John Blair will take the lead on this item.
Good evening, Madam Mayor and City Council. Before you, as you know, at the last few meetings, you have reviewed your council procedure memorandum. Tonight, there is another, and hopefully this might be the last amendment for a while, proposed amendment to council procedure memorandum number three. And this is due to a state law change that was effective July the first. As we know, there's been, your current procedure memorandum three has a remote participation policy for counselors. And the state law, Freedom of Information Act now permits to have you to participate remotely. It had been just due to your own medical condition. If you couldn't make it to a meeting, you were able to participate remotely. This would expand that, that if you have to take care of a family member due to their medical condition, you would be able to participate remotely. The other change is, and just to add to that, your medical condition or a family member's medical condition, if you wanted to participate remotely, is unlimited. As to the other change, the state has now changed it so that you may participate up to 25% of your meetings for a personal reason. As I stated at the last meeting, it's a little bit difficult because you all have a number of special meetings. So what I've proposed is you have 21 total meetings. And when you divide that by four, you get to 5.25. And I'd like to thank Counselor Mead, because the original draft here had five meetings you could participate in for personal reasons. And she pointed out, the statute, it says you round up, but when I read it initially, I read that as rounding up, but it's a mandatory roundup. So if the, if it was 5.1, you have to round up to six. Well, this was 5.25 mandatory, you round up to six. So this change would allow you to participate in up to six council meetings remotely per year due to a personal reason. And again, all the other regulations stay in place. So as you know, you start your meeting, the individual states there, either they have a medical condition, their family member has a medical condition, or they state their personal reason, then you vote to allow it. They have to disclose their location, where they're at. And additionally, you as the council, as well as members of the audience, per the Freedom of Information Act, have to be able to hear them to participate remotely. So with that, I'm happy to take any questions.
Are there any questions? No, I think it's pretty clear cut. Thank you.
Thank you.
The next item is item five, an update on the Stanton Crossing Economic Development Business Plan. Ms. Beauregard.
Mr. Billy Vaughn, our Director of Economic Development, will take the lead on this item for us.
Welcome, Mr. Vaughn.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, members of council. Thanks for the opportunity to share with you what's happening at Stanton Crossing. I want to talk to you tonight during my time about the demolition, brownfields grant, crossingway extension, the marketing plan, and lead generation and direct contacts. Before I get into what's happening on what I will call phase two, three, and four, I want to just bring up the speed on phase one, which is the commercial development component. That's the front 25 acres where there's two hotels. You know, you've seen, you witnessed the 7-Eleven that's there. We now have word that Chipotle, Jersey Mike, and Wendy's are coming to that location. And that, that front portion, outside of a pandemic year, will generate over $1.5 million in revenue to the city. So it's really good, we got that portion started. And so now we'll move to what's happening on the other phases. In terms of the demolition, as you, you're well aware, the contract began January the 4th. It's with Commonwealth Escavating, and of course, their local company. And they have 12 months to complete the $2.4 million project. There are 19 buildings that must be abated before they're demolished, and there are 18 underground and above ground tanks that must be abated, removed, and disposed of properly. Based on the contractor's budget, about $1 million towards environmental abatement and 1.4 towards the demolition structure. Current status, 18 buildings have been properly abated and all asbestos removed, with the exception of building 126, where there was interest by the schools to purchase or acquire that building. That's the only one remaining. Nine buildings have been demolished. 16 tanks have been abated, removed, and disposed of properly. We still have two tanks remaining at building site 126. To date expenditures, 96% of the budget for environmental has been expended, and 43% of the demolition has been expended. So if I were to give you those numbers, it would be $940,000. So you don't have to do the calculations in your head. And $600,000 for the demolition. Just want to show you quickly here which buildings have been demolished. Richmond Road, North Frontier Drive, the hotels are right out here. This is an old image. Building 126 is here. So one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine buildings have been demolished. I'm sorry, I don't have current aerial footage to show you, but we've, the contractors made significant progress. Again, scheduled due date, based on the contract, is January, I guess, 4th of 2022. Not sure whether or not the contractor will meet that date, but if he doesn't, there's a price for him to pay. Daily price. Any questions on the demolition?
Any questions?
On the brownfields grant, we were allocated $432,000 from the grant, which we haven't received yet, because we still need to meet the requirements in the performance agreement, which we must demolish 17 buildings and remove nine tanks and expend $1.3 million. Our current performance deadline is August 31st of this year, and so staff will be requesting an extension for us to meet those, meet that deadline. And of course, that $432,000 will reduce the $2.4 million cost for the demolition.
Ms. Mayor Robertson? Is the, is it guaranteed, an extension will be granted?
Pretty close to it. They've already given us one extension because of the pandemic and because we had to pull the last, the project in 2019. So I believe that we'll send a letter and we'll get the extension. We're pretty close to meeting those requirements, so I really don't see that as an issue. The crossingway extension, of course, that's the new road, Spine Road, providing access to the interior 275 acres. If we were on the screen, the computer in the conference room, I could caucus room, I could mark on that and show you exactly where it's located. But in this particular case, not there. So it will go in this general direction. Oh, across the top of the hill, and then tie back into Valley Center Drive. That project, which is a VDOT administered project, we're currently, we currently have construction plans, they're not what they call 90% complete. The city engineer is currently reviewing those plans to determine if easements and inside the right of way for the road, but also outside of the road right of way, which would have to deal with Columbia Gas and Dominion easements, but also the temporary easement, construction easement, as well as the final, the permanent easement. Our city engineer is still reviewing those documents. Once that's finalized, then a final plat will have to be submitted to planning commission for review and recommendations to council. The EDA will have to sign off on the final plat, and council will have to approve the final plat to transfer that right of way of the road to VDOT so they can construct that road. And as a, to date, they plan to issue and intend to award first quarter of '22 with construction beginning, hopefully, the second quarter of '22. And that would take about a year and a half to two years to complete the project. As I shared with the EDA this morning, now that the city is committed to the demolition, VDOT's committed to funding the road and design the road, there is a need to implement one of the recommendations in the business strategy, and that deals with the marketing plan. We need to start marketing that site. The state is very aware of what we're doing, so is our regional partnership and our many contacts that we have. But we've got to get that word out and that message out to the rest of the world that what we have here is what they need. So we began the process, working with, engaged with Michelle Communications Manager, and we'll be putting together requests for proposals. And I'd hope to have that on the street by end of this month, but it'll probably be first week or so in August. And so we'll put that out there for companies to bid on the project. You have in front of you, if there are no questions on the marketing plan.
Any questions?
You have in front of you two page of information regarding lead generation and direct contact. The lead generation, those are what we call requests for information, and they come from the state. The state's contacted by brokers, developers, site location consultants with possible projects. The state disseminates that information to all 11 regional partnerships. And of course, we're part of the, a member of the Channell Valley Partnership. These projects come to us as well as everyone else. And then based on what's being requested and ways of the needs of the company, whether it's a half million square foot building or 40 to 50 acres, you know, they're investing $75 to $100 million in CapEx, whether it's a food and distribution facility, we respond to each of those requests, sending our information either on Stanton Crossing, Green Hills, Industrial Center, Industrial and Technology Center, or any other sites, Unify, Chestnut Hills, that meets the needs of these requests. And these are the ones that we've received since May, and these are real projects. It doesn't mean that we have them and we'll get them, because we're competing with, you know, entire United States or the Northeast. But these are real potential projects for us. There's one that, a million square feet, that requires rail access. If you'll look at the aerial, again, you'll note, again.
I think Billy must have done something to the technology, because I'm not seeing that on the screen anymore.
Oh, I am so sorry. I hired an IT specialist and I
Yeah.
thought they would come through for me. And I had to make that deposit first, so, thank you. Here's Richmond Road, and of course, here's the entrance to Stanton Crossing. Here's the railroad. This is Buckingham. Buckingham Branch Railroad. And again, this is all St. Crossing. If we were to look at 50 to 100 acres, it would basically be from here, we do not own this property, this is all part of phase one. It would be about that general area all the way through here. So you'd have a rail spur coming off into this area. And then if we're looking at a half million to a million square foot facility, it would take up all of that land, at least half of the campus. That's why I was so critical to retain control of building 126. The other page that you have in your pocket deals with direct contact. And these are companies that we've developed a relation with, relationship with over the years. And they have local brokers that have, and are involved with larger national or southeast regional companies that, because of our relationship with the local folks, that word is getting through those companies, and that they're looking at Stanton Crossing. And these are actual phone calls, conversations, site tours with folks that we, I've known, we know, but I've known for years, that are very serious about bringing something to Stanton Crossing. There's probably a better chance with direct contact that we have of getting a project versus the lead generation, because those folks, the, with direct contact, that they know what they're looking for, and they're coming directly to the locality, they're not going to the state first. Any questions? That's all I have for the update.
Counselor Mead.
Yeah, I think you've, you've explained it before, but why is, why do some, some of these folks prefer that the site can't be developed or owned or controlled versus local government control?
They truly believe that dealing with local governments, they'll get a better deal, because most local governments are not looking to make high dollar off the sale of property. Local governments are looking at long-term investment and the return of taxes, and not just real estate, but whether it's machinery and tools, sales, logistics, that's, that's key.
Thanks.
Counselor Dole.
I noticed between the lead generation and the direct contact, there were actually three that expressed an interest in rail. So of course, that made me think, well, if one person, you know, buys up that whole, I guess I was just thinking, is there a way to like parcel out rail access some way to, because we may get two or three people that really, the deal, the rail is the, the deal breaker. I just wondered how that would work, because I don't know.
Yeah, as I said before, the challenge of this, of the city is going to be deciding who not to give the project to, just, you know, just someone to say, we have a project. So that's really critical. And we'd have to use someone like the Timmons Group, who's known, you know, many states, they do great work, but try and decide who's that first company that needs rail? And can that site be laid in a fashion that another building can take advantage of that? But if you're looking at a company that wants a half million to a million square feet, they'll probably be the first one to get the primary access to a siding. But there's still maybe a case where you can, you would have that primary siding coming up to the building with the docks for offloading, but maybe there's a way to bring off another spur off of that as well.
I'm sure Buckingham would be happy to work with us on that.
We've talked to them several times, and they're, they're ready to go with something. And of course, we, hopefully, we'd end up getting a state rail grant to help offset the cost of the installation.
Any additional questions or comments?
All the three that are direct contacts, are they, are they all food processing, or is that just?
No, they're not all food processing.
All right. Anyone else? Ms. Mayor Robertson?
I was looking at number one under direct contact, and it's probably a million square foot facility. Got a different one than the, on the front one that has a, up to a million square foot?
It's a good question, it could be, could be the same one, could be a different one. Being honest with you, I know, I know the project as it relates to the direct contact. When we get lead, one from lead generation, we have no idea who it is. There's just a few words that I removed so that I wouldn't reveal any confidential information, but many times with lead generation, we don't know who it is. Now, on direct contact, they use the S, tell us who it is.
And that was the same thing, I think, that Carolyn, I think I was leading at was, because that's a million square foot facility, and you were talking about it going from there up to there with the rail coming through. Then the very next one is rail in required, like I said, and it was a $45 million investment, but it's 450,000 square foot. That would be, like I said, two competing companies or projects that would, that are asking.
That's a great problem to have.
Yeah, no, exactly.
And what would truly happen would be that I would take this to the EDA and then bring it to council. And I've done it in the past when we have a legitimate project, such as the medical marijuana, goes to EDA in the morning, council in the evening, under a closed meeting.
Well, there, Counselor Clappin?
Just to follow up on it, at the EDA meeting this morning, there was no, there was no need to go to a closed session to discuss any of this. These are just broad generalities of what is available and out there and what people are looking for.
And that was done intentionally, because we really wanted to get some information in front of you, instead of going into closed session and, and doing it so it's out there in the public. But, you know, again, it's been mass enough not to reveal confidential information.
Well, we appreciate the information and the various possibilities, so, right. Well, thank you.
Thank you.
Right, the next item is item six, a discussion of city council retreat. Ms. Beauregard.
Okay, thank you. This is my item. So you all should have received from me today the latest student poll, and it looks like August 10th and 11th are the dates where everybody can be there. I want to thank Ms. Mayor Robertson for your flexibility. I know the second date was difficult, but we've managed to work it out, so it's a Tuesday and Wednesday. And it's still planning to do a day and a half. So right now, and this is the same plan we had last fall, the plan would be to go on the first day, starting around lunchtime until around six, and then the second day, starting at nine and going till around three. Our, two of our facilitators, Kim Payne and Jack Tuttle, will be reaching out to each of you again. If you recall, last fall, they did call each of you, had several questions for you to find out what you would like to talk about, how you would like it to shape out during the retreat. And it's been a while now, so they felt strongly that they needed to do that again, and we agreed with that. So because it's so tight now, we're less than three weeks away, we're going to be hopping right on that, and I'll be asking Ms. Denny to help with you all to set up those conversations with them as soon as possible. Let me also say that last time, you all have had a feedback site on your vision and priorities. I don't know when that was set up, I guess it maybe was the last time that was updated, maybe three or, three or two or three years ago. That is still on the website, we can push that out again and add that you all will be discussing your priorities and vision at the retreat, and that we would appreciate feedback from the community. And there's really only one question on there. It's how do you envision Stanton in 10 years? So that, we haven't changed any of that, but we would push that out, or if there's suggestions on anything else you'd like to hear about, but we need to get that out soon, given the timeline that we're under now, with the retreat being on the 10th and 11th. And that can, people can find that at our website, ci.stanton.vad.us/vision2030. And then you will see a vision feedback link that you can click on to insert your comments regarding the vision of Stanton. With that, I think that's all I have to say. I'd be happy to answer any questions, or if you all have any discussion. I'm just very pleased that we were able to identify some dates, so that's very exciting. So we're going to plan a good retreat, I hope, for everybody. So happy to answer any questions.
Right, any questions? Let's have it at the spa, the Blackburn Inn.
Why don't we bring a chair masseuse over or something?
Yeah. All right. Thank you for all of your hard work on that, Mr. Beauregard. All right, the next item is a break. We will return at 7:30 for the regular meeting. This concludes the work session.
As Mayor of the City of Stanton, I call the July 22, 2021 regular City Council meeting to order. And the first item on the agenda is the Pledge of Allegiance. So if you would like, please stand with me for the pledge.
To the flag of the United States of America, in its sovereign republic where it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, the next item is the invocation moment of silence. And tonight, this will be done by Councilmember Darby.
Good evening. This evening I will be saying a Christian prayer. So if you would like to join me, please feel free to do so. Let us pray. Dear Heavenly Father, thank you for all the blessings of this life. Thank you for our wonderful city of Stanton that we are all blessed to call home. As we proceed to do the city's business this evening, please grant this council wisdom to make good decisions regarding matters before us. Father, help us to be the leaders you want us to be. We pray all of this in your son's holy name. Amen.
All right, the next item is the mayor's report. And I would like to read the state of the city. So we've done quite a bit this past year. So this is rather lengthy. So if you can bear with me. The state of the city. I began as mayor in July of 2020, which was a very difficult time for our community and the world due to the pandemic. Everything seemed to be operating differently. Budgets were and still are strained. And there was a heightened sense of unease, but Stantonians tapped into our reserves of imagination and resilience and pulled together as one to get through the challenges. When City Hall and other facilities closed, we found a creative way to continue to communicate personally with the community members to keep them informed of city programs and services, provide in-house by city staff, a series of videos featured elected officials, city staff, and community partners. We also launched shop and dine out in downtown, which continues to be very popular. We distributed over $4.3 million in cares funding to schools, nonprofits, small businesses, the jail, and others in the community to address the pandemic and offer some relief through small business and nonprofit grants and recovery kits, rent mortgage assistance, gas and electric utilities assistance, childcare assistance, mental health services, and temporary shelter. We cannot have done this without our partners at the Stanton City School Board, Stanton Economic Development Authority, the SAW MSA Recovery Task Force, Community Foundation of Central Blue Ridge, Augusta County, and others. It was truly a demonstration of how Stanton pulls together in times of need. We had the opportunity to demonstrate those qualities yet again when Stanton experienced two significant floods in our downtown area. The community rallied around those who were impacted, and again, Stanton kept going. We witnessed significant collaboration among Central Shenandoah Planning District Commission, Community Foundation of the Central Blue Ridge, Stanton Downtown Development Association, Shenandoah Community Capital Fund, and the city. Damage assessment services were provided for businesses and residents. Public work staff offered extra refuge and large item collection, as well as sandbag distribution. Donation sites were established at the library in downtown to receive cleanup supplies. The landfill opened for additional days and hours to allow debris drop off. And over 169,000 in flood relief was distributed to small businesses through the Shenandoah Community Capital Fund. An additional 156,000 was distributed to residents from the Community Foundation of the Central Blue Ridge. I think all of us can agree that Stanton's true character shone bright during that very challenging time and throughout this past year. Despite all of these obstacles, we kept a portion of our focus in recovery and continuing our work on the Stanton Crossing Economic Development Business Plan in an effort to improve the chances of landing a targeted business, no pun intended, with the target business. With three important actions kicking off in the past year, one, the demolition of the existing buildings on the site, the design of the primary access road, and three, leveraging previously procured funds for the demolition to secure additional state funds. While Phase One of the plan already brings in over half a million dollars in taxes during non-COVID years, these items move Stanton Crossing closer to qualifying as a Tier Four site under Virginia Businesses Ready Sites Program, which will make it an even more marketable site and will further position Stanton as a premier place to bring businesses. In addition to the movement we saw at Stanton Crossing, we also saw noteworthy progress along the Richmond Avenue Commercial Corridor, the completion of the second phase of the Stanton Innovation Hub in downtown, the opening of the Blackburn Spa and Conference Center, the award to Homegrown Rising Technologies, a funding through the Virginia Jobs Investment Program to expand its operations of textile-based engineering solutions right here in Stanton, and the award of 300,000 from the U.S. Environmental Protection Agency to help assess, clean up, and revitalize former industrial and commercial sites in Stanton's West End. Finally, over the past year, the city continued to work in partnership with the state and region, as well as local organizations such as the Shenandoah Capital Community Fund, formerly Stanton Creative Community Fund, Stanton Downtown Development Association, and Stanton Innovation Hub to support local businesses. So many thanks to these partners in assisting with our efforts. While tourism was one of the hardest hit industries throughout the pandemic, Stanton remained front of mind when folks feel safe and ready to travel again. Among others, we were featured in Washingtonian Strong Towns, Southern Living, USA Today, and on MSN in Oprah Daily. Now, you know you have done a good job when Oprah recognizes you. There were other meaningful accomplishments that should be recognized over the past 12 months. On November 12, 2020, Rita S. Wilson Council Chambers was dedicated in Stanton City Hall.
I don't mind driving.
As Mayor of the City of Stanton, I call the July 22, 2021, regular city council meeting to order. And the first item on the agenda is the Pledge of Allegiance. So if you would like, please stand with me for the pledge.
To the flag of the United States of America, in its sovereign republic where it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, the next item is the invocation moment of silence. And tonight, this will be done by Councilmember Darby.
Good evening. This evening I will be saying a Christian prayer, so if you would like to join me, please feel free to do so. Let us pray. Dear Heavenly Father, thank you for all the blessings of this life. Thank you for our wonderful city of Stanton that we are all blessed to call home. As we proceed to do the city's business this evening, please grant this council wisdom to make good decisions regarding matters before us. Father, help us to be the leaders you want us to be. We pray all of this in your son's holy name. Amen.
All right, the next item is the mayor's report. And I would like to read the state of the city. So we've done quite a bit this past year, so this is rather lengthy, so if you can bear with me. State of the city. I began as mayor in July of 2020, which was a very difficult time for our community and the world due to the pandemic. Everything seemed to be operating differently. Budgets were and still are strained. And there was a heightened sense of unease, but Stantonians tapped into our reserves of imagination and resilience, and pulled together as one to get through the challenges. When City Hall and other facilities closed, we found a creative way to continue to communicate personally with the community members to keep them informed of city programs and services, provide in-house by city staff a series of videos featured elected officials, city staff, and community partners. We also launched shop and dine out in downtown, which continues to be very popular. We distributed over $4.3 million in CARES funding to schools, nonprofits, small businesses, the jail, and others in the community to address the pandemic and offer some relief through small business and nonprofit grants and recovery kits, rent mortgage assistance, gas and electric utilities assistance, childcare assistance, mental health services, and temporary shelter. We cannot have done this without our partners at the Stanton City School Board, Stanton Economic Development Authority, the SAW MSA Recovery Task Force, Community Foundation of Central Blue Ridge, Augusta County, and others. It was truly a demonstration of how Stanton pulls together in times of need. We had the opportunity to demonstrate those qualities yet again when Stanton experienced two significant floods in our downtown area. The community rallied around those who were impacted, and again, Stanton kept going. We witnessed significant collaboration among Central Shenandoah Planning District Commission, Community Foundation of the Central Blue Ridge, Stanton Downtown Development Association, Shenandoah Community Capital Fund, and the city. Damage assessment services were provided for businesses and residents. Public work staff offered extra refuge and large item collection, as well as sandbag distribution. Donation sites were established at the library in downtown to receive cleanup supplies. The landfill opened for additional days and hours to allow debris drop off. And over 169,000 in flood relief was distributed to small businesses through the Shenandoah Community Capital Fund. An additional 156,000 was distributed to residents from the Community Foundation of the Central Blue Ridge. I think all of us can agree that Stanton's true character shone bright during that very challenging time and throughout this past year. Despite all of these obstacles, we kept a portion of our focus in recovery in continuing our work on the Stanton Crossing Economic Development Business Plan in an effort to improve the chances of landing a targeted business. No pun intended with the target business. With three important actions kicking off in the past year, one, the demolition of the existing buildings on the site, the design of the primary access road, and three, leveraging previously procured funds for the demolition to secure additional state funds. While Phase One of the plan already brings in over half a million dollars in taxes during non-COVID years, these items move Stanton Crossing closer to qualifying as a Tier Four site under Virginia Businesses Ready Sites Program, which will make it an even more marketable site and will further position Stanton as a premier place to bring businesses. In addition to the movement we saw at Stanton Crossing, we also saw noteworthy progress along the Richmond Avenue Commercial Corridor, the completion of the second phase of the Stanton Innovation Hub in downtown, the opening of the Blackburn Spa and Conference Center, the award to Homegrown Rising Technologies, a funding through the Virginia Jobs Investment Program to expand its operations of textile-based engineering solutions right here in Stanton, and the award of 300,000 from the U.S. Environmental Protection Agency to help assess, clean up, and revitalize former industrial and commercial sites in Stanton's West End. Finally, over the past year, the city continued to work in partnership with the state and region, as well as local organizations such as the Shenandoah Capital Community Fund, formerly Stanton Creative Community Fund, Stanton Downtown Development Association, and Stanton Innovation Hub to support local businesses. So many thanks to these partners in assisting with our efforts. While tourism was one of the hardest hit industries throughout the pandemic, Stanton remained front of mind when folks feel safe and ready to travel again. Among others, we were featured in Washingtonian, Strong Towns, Southern Living, USA Today, and on MSN and Oprah Daily. Now, you know you have done a good job when Oprah recognizes you. There were other meaningful accomplishments that should be recognized over the past 12 months. On November 12, 2020, Rita S. Wilson Council Chambers was dedicated in Stanton City Hall. Ms. Wilson, among other accomplishments, served on city council from 1991 to 2008 as the first African-American female to serve on council, including as stint as vice mayor, and on the Stanton School Board from 1985 to 1989. Ms. Wilson served the community with passion and zeal. She was instrumental in the evolution of her alma mater Booker T. Washington High School into a community center. She tackled community problems through her public service and worked countless hours with numerous charitable and civic organizations. We are proud to acknowledge those many contributions through the dedication of these chambers and remain grateful for all she did for Stanton. On a sad note, the Stanton City Council lost one of their own with the passing of past council member Bruce Elder. He fought a courageous battle against cancer, but even during this battle, he worked without end to make Stanton a better place to live for all citizens. In addition, the Central Avenue Streetscape Improvement Project got started at the end of 2020 and will continue through the summer of 2022. This project will extend the historical character of downtown Stanton, adding the final segment of the unbroken trail of brick sidewalks from Gypsy Hill Place all the way to the wharf. The city will also install historic-style streetlights, relocate utilities underground, and repave the roadway. More than 85% of the funding for this project is being provided by federal and state transportation funds, and we look forward with anticipation to its completion. In December of 2020, City Council adopted the Stanton Greenways Plan, which counters four distinct greenways within the city. The plan will guide construction of additional dedicated paths and infrastructure using a hub and spoke concept with all of the paths originating from downtown and connecting to popular destinations, particularly parks. This plan progresses years of efforts of previous councils and will continue to guide future council strategies for investing in community assets. We also had the opportunity to welcome U.S. Senator Tim Kaine in early May, where we discussed the challenges of the past year and got to show off a few of our downtown businesses. Just last month in June, City Council, School Board, and Economic Development Authority came together to discuss how they could work together on a facility need that the school district is facing. Together, they agreed to put together a city school working group to pursue solutions to these challenges and are already making meaningful progress. As everyone here likely knows, the city manager is responsible for hiring the majority of the staff at the city of Stanton. However, there are a few positions that city council appoints directly, and we were able to do that twice in the past year. City Attorney John Blair was brought on board in March of this year, and Clerk of Council Rachel Zinni joined us last month in June. The city also appointed two new directors since July of 2020. Jeff Johnston joined us as the Director of Public Works, and Michelle Bixler is the new Communications Manager. Welcome to all of you, as well as others who have joined the Stanton team. I'd also like to thank all of our city staff that retired in the past FY year. We appreciate and thank you for your service to this beautiful city. After, and speaking of staff, I wanted to acknowledge a few of the awards and recognitions received by several of our departments. Commissioners of the Revenue Association of Virginia has awarded accreditation to Stanton's office for upholding the statewide standards of performance and service to community. The Access to Justice Commission of the Supreme Court of Virginia issued a proclamation acknowledging the hard work of the many civil servants during the pandemic, including the clerk's office, judges, their assistants, sheriff's office, and all other professionals who are dedicated to a functioning court system. The City of Stanton Fire and Rescue Department received a 2020 Governor's Fire Service Award for Outstanding Fire Department Response for its Work During the Flood on August 8, which included responding to an incredible 89 emergency incidents. The Finance Department received the Government Finance Officers Association Distinguished Budget Award and Certificate of Achievement for Excellence in Financial Reporting for the Comprehensive Annual Financial Report. In February, Stanton's PSAP, the 9/11 Center, was the fourth locality in the state to complete migration to Virginia's NG 9/11 ESI net, and one of less than 10% of PSAPs in the country to migrate to the NG 9/11 I3 standards. In April, the city received a Tree City USA Award, making 25 years as a Tree City USA. In May, Stanton's Water Treatment Plant received a Gold Award for Performance Excellence from the Virginia Department of Health's Office of Drinking Water for Exceeding Efficiency and Effectiveness Goals that go well beyond the regulatory standards. Also, the Stanton Sheriff's Department was gifted a new deputy canine puppy named Liberty as a result of the sad death of Kara. Excellent work done by all. I would be remiss if I didn't take a moment right now to send out a huge thank you to all of our staff here at the City of Stanton who have been right here in the thick of it the entire time. And beyond staff, there have been countless volunteers from the community working with our nonprofits and community organizations and giving their time to boards and commissions. This has been a particularly difficult year, so let us take a moment right now to express our gratitude for all each of you do every day to make our community a better place. In closing, I would like to take a moment to thank my fellow council members. While we welcomed three new elected officials to the dais, Councilor Claffey, Councilor Darby, and Vice Mayor Roberts, all of us certainly had our work cut out for us this year. We have each been through these very difficult times alongside our neighbors and friends. I appreciate what each of you bring to this job, and I look forward to working together over this next year with all of my council members on our common goals for the betterment of Stanton. Thank you. That is your state of the city for the city of Stanton. Let's see here. Just a couple of quick items. I attended the Mayor's Institute this past week, and it was very informative. All the mayors throughout the state of Virginia came together, and we all shared our highs and lows from this past year with the pandemic. So it was good to hear that we were not alone. Like to mention, the West End will be having a West End Road Rally. Let's see if I can pull that up here. On, here we go. West End Road Rally and Scavenger Hunt. This will take place August 21 at 11:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. This is being sponsored by the Stanton West End Business Association, and the meeting place will be at the Van Stan at Gypsy Hill Park. So if you have any questions, please feel free to, well, you can reach out to me. You can reach out to City Hall, or you can reach out to Joe Mills or Kim Harris. They are two members of the West End Business Association that will be helping to put on the West End Road Rally, which this is the third year they've had it, and it's been a huge success every year, so should be a lot of fun. All right, that's it for me. Are there any additional items by members of council?
Mayor Oaks.
Councilor Darby.
Just, there is going to be a stuff the bus in preparation for schoolchildren going back to school. That is going to be in the Stanton Augusta County and Waynesboro areas, and it's August, the weekend of August, I think, 6 through the 8. So be on the lookout. Council members will receive an email about that if you want to help out.
All right, sounds good. Thank you. Are there any additional items for members of, Councilor Dull?
A couple things. First, I'd like to give a shout out to the scouts that are here tonight. What troop are you from? And then I have a little something I wanted to read that I thought was very interesting. "The Year 2021 Celebrates the 100th Anniversary of the First Black CPA." Many people might not recognize the name John Wesley Cromwell Jr., and he lived from 1883 to 1971, but he became the country's first black CPA in 1921. He faced years of discrimination and exclusion as he pursued his dream of becoming a CPA. The first CPA law was passed in New York in 1896, but it was another 25 years before Cromwell joined the profession. Some of the largest hurdles that made CPA licensure impossible for black CPAs included education, experience, and exclusion. Cromwell's father, John Wesley Cromwell Sr., was born a slave in Virginia. After his family purchased their freedom, Cromwell Sr. would ultimately graduate from Howard University Law School. Cromwell Jr. attended a college preparatory program at Howard, then studied mathematics and astronomy at Dartmouth College, earning bachelor's and master's degrees. During that time, most Americans did not attend college, and only one in 3,600 blacks had a college degree. Whites were five times more likely than blacks to go to college. After graduation in 1906, Cromwell returned to his hometown of Washington, D.C., and taught mathematics at Paul Lawrence Dunbar High School, a prestigious high school for black students. Most states required CPA exam candidates to work for a licensed CPA in an accounting firm. However, Cromwell, along with other black aspiring CPAs, could not get a job because CPA firms generally refused to hire them. They insisted their white clients would not be comfortable having their work handled by a black accountant. Furthermore, Cromwell was not allowed to sit for the CPA exam in Washington, D.C., Virginia, or Maryland. More than 15 years passed, and in 1921, New Hampshire dropped the experience requirement needed for licensure. Cromwell then took the exam and New Hampshire passed and became a CPA. And so I won't read all of this, but it was kind of a fascinating story. In December 1969, there were only 136 black CPAs out of 100,000 in the U.S. And so there's been efforts to increase that number. So today, through some of these efforts, there are more than 200,000 blacks participating in the field of accounting, of which more than 5,000 are CPAs. However, black CPAs represent only 3% of accounting staff, and less than 1% are partners at CPA firms. And so I wanted to recognize that because, you know, I'm a recovering CPA myself, and this was very interesting to me, but also the fact that we're still kind of lacking in black CPAs. So I wanted to let everyone know, no matter your race, you can make a lot of money as a CPA, if that's your thing, but if you want an exciting, interesting life and career, you can be a CPA and be in any field. Look at the movie credits, and you'll see accountants. So if you want to hang out with the movie stars, you can be a CPA and do that. Or you can work for nonprofits and have that feeling that you're helping make things better. So this is just an acknowledgement of the trials that Cromwell went through just to become a CPA. And it's a lot easier now, but I encourage everyone, particularly younger people who haven't decided what they want to do, to look into that, because the other really great thing about CPAs, if you're doing a good job, people aren't breaking the law. And that matters a lot to me. So that's my little pitch for careers.
Thank you. All right. Our members from the scout troop, would you like to stand up and introduce yourself? And are you working on a particular badge tonight?
Scoutmaster Scott Meads, here from Tru- here in Stanton, and we are working on citizenship and communications.
Oh, great job. Well, thank you for coming out tonight.
Awesome.
All right, the next item is the approval of minutes. I'll entertain a motion for the approval of the special meeting of June 17, 2021.
You got that, Terry?
Oh, I'm looking right now.
Mayor Oaks.
Councilor Mead.
I move to approve the minutes of the special meeting of June 17, 2021.
Okay, we have a motion on the floor. Is there a second? Vice Mayor Robertson is second. Any further discussion? I'm hearing none. Ms. Zinni, please call the roll.
Mayor Oaks.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Robertson.
Aye.
Mr. Holmes.
Aye.
Ms. Mead.
Aye.
Mr. Claffey.
Aye.
Ms. Dull.
Aye.
Ms. Darby.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Next, I'll entertain a motion to approve the work session and regular meeting minutes of June 24, 2021. Councilor Mead.
I move to approve the minutes of the work session and regular meeting of June 24, 2021.
All right, so we have a motion on the floor. Is there a second?
Second.
Councilor Holmes is second. Any further discussion? I'm hearing none. Ms. Zinni, please call the roll.
Ms. Darby.
Aye.
Ms. Dull.
Aye.
Mr. Claffey.
Aye.
Ms. Mead.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Robertson.
Aye.
Mr. Holmes.
Aye.
Mayor Oaks.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you. So the next item, regular meeting portion of the city council meeting, it's item A. A public hearing in consideration of a request by the City of Stanton to amend Chapter 18.120, Yard Building Setback and Open Space Exceptions subsequent to 18.120 0144F of Title 18, zoning of the Stanton City Code. Wow, that's a mouthful, Mr. Blair. All right, Ms. Bowery.
Thank you. Rodney Rhodes, our senior planner, will take the lead on this one.
Welcome, Mr. Rhodes.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, city council members. Yes, that is quite a mouthful. It's quite simple, though. This is a proposed amendment to codify a longstanding policy that the city has had. The current zoning ordinance of this section that the mayor referenced states that no dwelling shall be erected on lot which does not abut at least one street for at least 30 feet. And it has been a longstanding policy of landlocked parcels that do not have street frontage that are zone residential that they would be permitted one single-family dwelling. Regardless of if it was zoned multifamily, you know, high density, medium density, it would still only be allowed the least intense use permitted in a residential district, which is a detached, single-family dwelling. And as mine is saying, this has been a policy that has been in effect for decades, but we were not able to find it in writing. And both the city attorney, Mr. Blair, and myself were not comfortable following suit with this policy when it directly conflicts what's in the ordinance. So I staff worked on a proposed amendment that would allow this type of development on parcels that do not have street frontage. There are some requirements that must have at least 10 feet, access easement to a maintained and developed city street. It would have to be for non-conforming lots that were platted prior to 1969. And the importance of that date is that's when the entire zoning ordinance was rewritten. So there should not be any residential lots in the city of Stanton that were planted after 1969 that don't have at least 30 feet of road frontage. So that's what's magical about that date. It's, to our knowledge, most of these lots that do not have street frontage were actually planted in the county, and then over the various annexations through the years, they became part of the city and did not have that street frontage. It's mine is saying that this county did not require a street frontage. I would note that the Plan Commission initially held a public hearing on us on May 20, 2021, and there were several people that spoke against this proposed amendment, specifically because it would allow several lots in their neighborhood, which is around Powertown Street, to be developed with single-family homes. Plan Commission at that meeting tabled it a month. They asked for a couple minor tweaks to the amendment, which staff made. And on June 15, on a 4-0 vote, the Commission unanimously voted to recommend approval of proposed amendments. approval of proposed amendments. I, I would note that, um, today we received eight phone calls that voiced their, um, displeasure with this proposed amendment and requested it be denied. They also, some of them noted they were opposed to multifamily and townhouse development in this Powhatan neighborhood. Well, that's not being proposed, um, tonight. That would not be permitted. Uh, multifamily would not be permitted in that development or any other developments on residential streets without street frontage, even with this amendment, regardless of the zoning of the property. Um, i- if this amendment is not adopted, or something similar to it, the, uh, the option that the property owners would have would be to apply for a variance. However, this code of Virginia specifies what qualifies for a variance, and if it's a condition of a recurring nature, then you should not grant a variance, you should amend the ordinance. So, uh, that's why staff is bringing this before you tonight. I would note that there are also costs associated with a variance. The property owner would have to spend two hundred dollars for the application, it would delay their project a month at least, and also, we have to advertise variances in the local paper, state code requirement. On average, that's about seven hundred dollars for each application, which the city has to pay for. So there, there are costs associated with, um, going through the variance process, and more so, the bigger issue is, it doesn't meet the requirements of state code for granting a variance. I'd be glad to, um, answer any questions you have at this time, or after you conduct a public hearing. I would also, um, welcome the opportunity after the public hearing to clarify any issues that may come up.
Are there any questions or comments? Um, Councilor Darby.
Mr. Rhodes, can you, how many pieces of property in the city are, that fall into this category?
I, I wish I knew. Um, there's no way to really track that to, and except to look at the city's GIS map and start counting lots. So we have no way to, um, to, to check that very quickly, and we have not kept track of how many we have issued under this unwritten policy over the past decades either, because we, we don't, you know, we've signed an address, we don't say whether or not it has street frontage or not, so there's no way to go on the computer and figure that out. We estimate that there are dozens of lots that would benefit from this amendment. But that's, that's just an educated guess. This came up probably about, um, four or five months ago, when I was faced with three parcels that did not have street frontage.
And I, I, one, go ahead. Explain what, you know, the ordinance was written to say that there needs to be this street frontage, road frontage. What, from the city's point of view, why is that important in the first place?
Um, and, and we do require that now, thirty feet of street frontage for any new parcel that's created, and it is deemed important that you have that direct access to a city street, um, for your driveway, for utilities, whatever.
Safety reasons?
Certainly.
That's a question.
Not until the public hearing. Councilor Dole.
That was my question. I was just curious how many, uh, possible lots this would affect, but I suggest you get an intern. Let them count.
Councilor Holmes.
Uh, yes, would we, would, would the city be responsible for providing sewer water, or would this be the builders themselves?
The builders would have to.
Hook up, hook up cost.
Yeah, yes, sir, Mr. Holmes. Um, they would have to go through the same process they do now to build a, a house. They would need to pay for those fees, for connection fees, and they would have to pay to, to, to connect to it, you know, the cost of it, and of course, if it's farther from the utility, it's going to be more costly.
With no road frontage, how would you get a driveway or, it, it, landlocked properties?
Uh, one of the requirements is that these lots would have to have a, at least a ten-foot access easement, so they could put a driveway in, because obviously you cannot cross someone else's property without a legal authority to, to do so.
Uh, Vice Mayor Robertson.
I reckon my issue is, uh, like I said, a ten-foot, that's, that all is on Powhatan right now, and I know this is other things, but I, I'm looking at a safety issue as well. In my rescue squad days, I know that running calls, I've had to, being on an ambulance, we could not actually get up to there, what we would have to do, and turn around. What we would have to do is you come up, go past, back up all the way, load, and then you had a straight shot out. So that is concerning a little bit, uh, and then as well, I'm, I'm just thinking if there was a major fire up in there, I, I'm worried, I, I would love to have, unfortunately, I don't have chief Garber here, but I'm, I'm a little concerned about if there is a major fire up there, or we're creating more congestion, how, how are we going, or does the fire department have any issues getting ladder one, or heaven forbid, you need that big tillery to get up in there, or whatever. That's my concern right now, so I'm still, you know, that's, that's what I'm looking about, um, having some issues with.
I have another question.
Councilor Darby.
I think you answered this already, but, I mean, why, why is this coming up now? If it's, if it's been this unwritten, apparently, thing for all these years, and it's been followed, why all of a sudden is, is, are we getting this?
Um, new set of eyes are looking at the ordinance, uh, Mr. Blair and myself. Um, and when I was looking at three potential, you know, houses that did not meet the ordinance, and how could we approve them to be developed when they don't meet the ordinance, just based on some unwritten policy? Um, I brought Mr. Blair's attention, and he concurred with me that we were not comfortable continuing with that unwritten policy.
And, and I think to, uh, augment what Mr. Rhodes is saying, there's also just the idea of transparency, right? I mean, if, if a citizen were to look at the ordinance as written, which requires thirty feet of street frontage before you can build, and all of a sudden a dwelling is going up, and they're pointing to the ordinance, they say, look, that's the law, what are you doing? And again, if this has been the practice, then we need to codify it so that the citizen who looks at the ordinance wouldn't, you know, they, they would certainly have a legitimate question, well, your ordinance requires thirty feet of street frontage, they don't have a variance, how are they able to build when they're, it looks like they're violating the ordinance as it's currently written?
Councilor Dole.
To me, this looks like, uh, you know, I hate to call it just housekeeping, but it's for our laws to be in compliance with our practice, because you don't, you don't want to be doing stuff, and the law says something totally different, and you just say, oh, well. So, so we're just getting the code and, the ordinance in compliance with what, what we historically do.
That is basically, yes, ma'am. However, um, I would not continue that practice. If this amendment fails, I would not continue that practice and allow single-family houses that are on lots that are landlocked with just easement, because it, it, you know, conflicts with the zoning ordinance.
Correct.
Councilor Claffey.
In the past, Rodney, were any houses or any development turned down based on this? I mean, you're saying that you have been overriding it and granting them?
It, it's my understanding that the office has, uh, for, for decades, um, if someone could show that they have a legal, um, easement for, uh, ingress egress to their landlocked parcel, and could meet all other zoning and city code requirements and building code requirements, then they, they were, they were issued permits for houses. Yes, sir.
So you're never aware of us turning anybody down based on this law in the past?
No, sir, but I, I do not see those individual applications come through. I don't.
All right, any additional questions or comments? Councilor Dole.
Uh, if, if we ceased, uh, doing whatever unofficial variance we've been doing for decades, um, then, then folks that have landlocked, uh, parcels, uh, have no, they, they've lost all use of their constructive use of that property, am I right? It, with no, with no alternative to build on it?
Well, and, and I'll let Rodney also comment, but there are other uses that, depending on the lot, depending on the regulations, there are other uses that could perhaps, uh, occur. For instance, a cell tower is one use that comes to mind. Uh, there are other possible uses for the property, again, but that's, that's parcel specific, you'd have to look at it.
But it limits, it limits every parcel.
Sure, there would not be a resident or dwelling permitted.
All right, Mr. Rhodes, um, walk me through this. So if I want a variance, I would come to the planning commission? Or approval?
Variances are only approved by the Board of Zoning Appeals.
Okay.
Um, now, the code requires, uh, the Virginia code requires that all variance applications be forwarded to the planning commission. So basically, it would go to the planning commission, one month, they do not need to make a recommendation on it, they can, if they, they choose. Um, since I've been here, I believe they have made a recommendation on one variance application, the others, they just pass through with no recommendation. Um, and then we go to the Board of Zoning Appeals, that's a public, um, hearing, so it's advertised, notices go to all the adjoining property owners, staff does a briefing, it goes out about a week before the hearing. Um, the Board of Zoning Appeals, they go out and do a site visit before the actual meeting, and then they conduct a public hearing. So that is the process, it is, you know, a couple hundred dollar, two hundred dollar application fee, and like I said, the cost of just advertising it is about seven hundred dollars for the city. That does include staff time, um, of course, uh, the, the board's time.
Okay, but this is the way it's been done in the past?
No, ma'am, it hasn't. That's the way it would have to be done if this amendment.
Have to be done, okay.
If this amendment fails.
I want to make this, I want to make this very clear, this is how it would have to be in the future.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, um, there would be a public hearing, though?
Yes.
Okay, in which the public can come and speak, um, and be heard.
That's correct.
Just like tonight, we are going to have a public hearing in which the citizens can speak before the council and be heard concerning this matter.
Yes.
Okay, all right. Are there any other questions or comments?
I just have one more, and, and I know, Mr. Rhodes, that this is probably difficult to answer, but obviously, it would take a lot of staff time, um, to do some type of study to, to determine, you know, to count how many of those lots we're actually talking about, but is that something that, you know, your department could bring back to us and let us know?
If city council believes that's a wise use of city staff time, we certainly could do that. I think our intern just finished up her job, though.
All right, anyone else?
But, so anytime that we had, uh, somebody wanting to do this, would they still come before a, for a public hearing, or it would just be, uh?
I, i- if this amendment is, uh, um, yes, if, if it's adopted, then it would be administrative, like any other single-family house. There is no notifications to adjoining property owners, um, that's actually not required, uh, not allowed, um, to provide that notification just for the development of a single-family house.
So there would be no public hearing necessary in which we hear from the public?
That's correct.
Okay. All right, um, to set up with folks in the audience, as well as on Zoom, and we are going to have a public hearing concerning this matter, I'm going to, um, read, um, an explanation of how the public hearing will work for the individuals that are on Zoom. In a moment, I will open the public hearing. It is a time that council sets aside to hear from citizens and others about a specific topic. We ask that you please give your name, your address, and then keep your remarks at five minutes or less. When you reach five minutes, uh, the five-minute time limit, I will let you know that your time has expired. For our Zoom participants, please raise your hand now if you wish to speak on this particular public hearing. If you raise your hand during the public hearing, you will also be able to raise your hand during the council meeting for other public hearings and matters from the public. And please keep your comments to five minutes as well. Once everyone who wishes to speak has had an opportunity, I will then close the public hearing. Ms. Bow regard, do you want to explain this a little bit better?
Oh, I thought you did a great job.
Well.
So, um, well, this is the first meeting I think we've had where we've had public hearings with the Zoom platform in use. We had matters from the public during our last meeting. Basically, if you're here in person, it just works the way it always has, you will come up to the podium, but if you're on the Zoom platform and you're hearing me, please raise your hand right now if you wish to speak on this particular matter. Don't raise your hand if you want to speak on item B or on matters from the public, just on this item A right now. Um, and then we will be alternating, correct?
Yes.
And, uh, will we start with Zoom or in person? I can't, I'll start in person, and then we'll go Zoom and in person and Zoom. So if you would like to speak on this matter and you're on Zoom, please raise your hand now, and you will be called on to speak in the order that we receive you raising your hand.
So in other words, for the citizens in the audience, you do not need to raise your hand, you can just come on up to the podium. Um, that's just for the folks on Zoom. There should be a mechanism in which you raise your hand so we know that you would like to speak concerning this matter. All right. I will now open the public hearing, so if you wish to speak, please approach the podium, and we'll alternate between individuals physically present and those that have their hands raised via the Zoom platform. With that, the public hearing is now open concerning this matter. Uh, you have five minutes to speak, for or against.
I'm here, and I, I hear a lot of things here, and I just wonder, is there a housing shortage in Stanton?
Okay, this is concerning, um, the public hearing involving the issue with the setback. I believe you want to wait and speak under matters from the public, which will be at the very end of the meeting.
Okay.
So if you can, um, just hang tight with us. We'll be, we'll be happy to, uh, listen to your comments.
I wanted to know what size of the, with size would the lots be, and how many lots would there be, and what type of houses would go on those lots?
Now, are you referring to the matter of the single-family dwelling issue that we just discussed? Mr. Rhodes? And sir, can you please state your name and your address? Can you do it in the microphone so we can have you on record? Thank you. No, no, you're fine, this is all new for everybody.
I'm not used to all these formalities.
Well, it's.
My name is Albino Albert Fossa.
Thank you.
And I live at four oh one Bowling Street.
Okay, all right. And we, Mr. Rhodes, can you please address the questions? Thank you.
Well, this would be an amendment that would be citywide, so as far as the size of the dwellings, it would be whatever the applicant proposes, as long as it meets the other zoning setback requirements. Um, as far as lot size, it, that's going to vary also. We do have minimum lot sizes depending on what district it is, you know, R one, R two, R three, R four, so that also varies, so I cannot give an answer to either one of those questions.
Thank you.
A specific answer, I'm sorry.
All right, now, oh, go ahead, Councilor Holmes.
So all these lots are only going to have one dwelling built on them, right?
Single-family dwelling.
Single, single-family dwellings.
That's correct.
Want to make sure of that.
All right, we're now going to. All right, we're now going to go to a caller. Who has that?
Caller, please state your name and the address in which you're located.
Hi, this is Yvonne Wilson. I'm at 2017 First Street in Stanton. I do have a couple of questions before I make my comment. I wanted to get some clarity on citizen reengagement for the city of Stanton. Just to clarify, are you saying that if this amendment does not go through, that public hearings will continue? Or is it that if this amendment does go through, that public hearings would still continue? That's what I'm trying to figure out. Because my concern is any amendment that is done concerning anything in the city of Stanton, the citizenry should be first and foremost be able to raise their concerns. So that was my question.
Hey, Mr. Blair, shouldn't the questions be addressed after?
At the end, after the public hearing.
All right, after the public hearing, Ms. Wilson will address your questions. So if you have a.
Okay.
If you have a statement, please feel free.
No, no statement right now, not until I get the answer to that question that matters from the public. Once that question is addressed, then I'll make my statement, if that's okay with the city council.
No, we allow one speaker under matters from the public. And then you, excuse me, under a public hearing, and then you can speak again under matters from the public.
Oh, okay.
Do you have a statement concerning this matter? Now's the time to do it. Now is the time to speak.
Like I said, my concern is is the fact that there may be a possibility that the citizens of Stanton would not be able to address their concerns, or there would not be public hearings concerning something like that. I may not be correct in that, which is why I asked the question. But anything that we have just done a vote and have fought for the citizens of Stanton to speak. And the only my concern is that something like this would infringe upon that. So if it does, no, I do not agree with an amendment to this measure if it does infringe on the rights of the citizens of Stanton to speak out and raise their concerns.
Okay, thank you. Next, we'll take someone from the audience. We appreciate everyone's patience. Again, this is new for all of us. I did receive the stink eye from our city attorney. Council members, if we can reserve our comments until after the public hearing, questions that are asked by the citizens will be addressed after the public hearing. So next, if anyone from the audience would like to approach the podium.
Matt Sutton, 1419 Dogwood Road, Stanton. I just want to know how this will affect our first responders, our schools, and our tax revenue. So those are always good questions. And from what I understood is that they have no idea how many lots is going to, you know, could happen to. So we don't know. So I say we do a study. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, next, from Zoom?
I do not have any callers with their hand raised.
Okay. All right, anyone else from the public, the audience?
Hello, my name is Susan Ashby. I live at 917 Palatine Street. I live three houses down from the lot that has been, I think, is what all this is really about. Our neighborhood is very tight, and the road is very narrow. Two cars can't pass through the road. So if a mass building would start there, and that's just a start, the road would have to be widened. And sure that they're going to, the builder has to bring the sewer and the water down to the road. But once it gets to the road, there's the big issue. Our sewer gets backed up all the time. City utilities constantly coming cleaning it out. We had no water pressure. You know, the city would have to replace those pipes. The road's cracked all to pieces. We're going to have heavy equipment going up and down it to redo all this stuff. And then if you open up to have non-road frontage properties to be developed, then there's also the issue of defacing the side of Betsy Bell Mountain. There's land for sale at the bottom of it. Well, in order to develop that part of it, you'd have to go through, in order to run water and sewer, gas and all that, you'd have to go through one house's property across Ramsey Street, across other two houses' properties down to Betsy Bell Road. Because another contractor tried to do that years ago, and he decided not to because at that time, the city was going to make him pay for all that. And the other issue is, it said that he can only put up one house on each piece of land. There's there's one lot in the front, there's two lots behind. Well, I have an email here from Mr. Rhodes concerning that, and he says, "The owner of the property reached out to me these past two days to discuss his development options. Although it isn't appropriate for me to divulge all the contents of my communications with him, I informed him that the property is zoned R3 medium density residential residential conditional. The permitted uses under this zoning are basically limited to single family dwellings and two family dwellings," in parentheses duplexes. I also informed him that any development of the property must be done in accordance with all relevant provisions of the city code. It will be months before I expect any applications to develop this property, you know, and so on. And I've got the email. I can show you. You're all welcome to see it. It kind of contradicts what he just said when he said it'd just be one house on each thing. It's not what he told the developer. And I've got it right here. So which is? And, you know, a 10-foot variance or 10-foot easement, you know, to get something up there with duplexes? If that, you know, God forbid, there should be a fire. The back two lots are very close to Betsy Bell Mountain, very close, far from here to there, that wall. And if that catches fire, all that, how are they going to get all that equipment of that little 10-foot easement in just a really short area? That one truck alone would take up the whole distance from the road up to the house, one truck. And the dead-end road that's down from it, Ramsey, we had an elderly neighbor that was sick a lot, and the ambulance would have to come up to him. And fire trucks, a fire truck would always follow because they come up. They'd have to turn, like Mark said, they have to turn around and back up the road because there's nowhere to turn around. Again, a tight road because there's off-street parking there. And to open this up for the whole city, you know, and to to put it under an umbrella as a one-size-fits-all, well, there might be some lots in the city that, hey, you could develop, you know, real easy to put a house on. Everything would work out. Emergency, emergency vehicles could get to them, you know, they'd have an easement. It would work for them. It would work. But you can't just do a one-size-fits-all. There's never been any problem with it being heard on an individual basis. And I don't see why it has to change now just because of one builder. Doesn't make sense to me. Now, you can say it's, it is about the city, yes. This amendment is about to change the whole city. But to me, from what I've heard and what I've gathered, I went to the planning commission meeting. When I spoke is the time that the chair decided to table it because she said something just didn't sound right about it. That was her, that's her exact words. That's why she tabled it. So I'm just saying, you know, it's up to y'all to, you know, you're either for the developer or you're for the citizens. But we've got to, you know.
Your time is up.
Okay, same, I'm sorry. Thank you.
Great. Ms. Inney, do we have any callers with their hands raised?
I do not have anyone with their hands raised on Zoom.
Okay, anyone else in the audience?
John Darby, 1824 Spring Hill Road. Based on her comments, Ms. Ashby's comments, I had a question, and I'm not sure if we all caught that, but it sounded like the one lot was going to be for one house. But if there's two other lots behind it, is this a situation where this amendment would open up a daisy chain event? So the words, if you get water and sewer, if the same person owns all three of those lots, they run water and sewer through one, and then it becomes a development all the way up the hill? Or they can put in multiple buildings based on that little bit of an easement or a little bit of a an alleyway? So it might be something to consider. Again, that's maybe a question for Mr. Rhodes. I would also agree with a study being done to find out what the impact here is citywide. I'm guessing that the different residential areas are going to be different. Okay, so you you might have some different situations. And then the other question maybe Mr. Rhodes could answer is that during all the annexations, so in other words, when the city grabbed the area from the county, how much of the city was actually annexed? So in other words, if this is a county issue prior to 1969, I mean, what are we looking at here? It's probably just in those areas that need to be counted. But if we had a percentage of how much of the city was actually annexed, that might give us an idea as well. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Any callers?
I do not have anyone with their hands raised.
Sir? We're getting the hang of this.
My name is Jeff Garza. I live on 328 Driscoll Street, which is two houses down from where this land is at. Since they have came in and tore the house down, we've had big rains, we've had water in our basement we never have had before. We got mud going down the road on both sides of the road. The place looks hideous. I really like to know what they want to build in there. We hear one oxbow, but I've heard condos. We're trying to get in there. Like you say, we don't have any room there. You go to make the turnaround to Ben, I don't know how many times, fire trucks, tractor trails have knocked the guide wires down, clipped telephone poles, so tight in there. That's what I'm here about. I want to know what they want to put in there, you know? One house I could understand, but with this other two lots back there, we got water problems now. And they put a bunch of asphalt in there. Where's the water going to go down to us? Because it's coming down the hill to us. That's what my concern, like you say, the road is small. We get 40 or 50 cars today go up and down it, going on the other streets. Now they want to put more in there? And like I say, they'd have to widen the roads because it is treacherous down through there. So that's my concern. And I've been there for 45 years. We've never had this problem with the water until the last six months when they started tearing stuff up. And then they don't even clean the place up. It's got trees laying everywhere where they cut them up. Grass is probably two foot tall. I mean, it's making our neighborhood look bad, which a lot of older people live there. We keep our yards up. So that's my concern. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
I do have someone with their hand raised on Zoom.
Okay, go ahead.
Caller, if you could state your name and where you reside? If you could unmute as well as then announce who you are and then what street you reside on?
Nothing?
No, I do not hear anything. Oh, she did lower her hand, so.
Okay, she lowered her hand, all right. Anyone else in the audience? All right, welcome.
Good evening. My name is Philip Brown. I am the developer slash builder of 902, 903, 905, and 907 Palatine. I want to first thank you folks for allowing us to come and speak on these particular issues. I'm not an expert on some of these things, but what I think Mr. Rhodes is introducing is not a multifamily, but a single family dwelling on those, you know, on those particular lots, along with the other lots throughout the city. In March 5th of 2019, my engineer sent an email out to Linda Nesselrod, and basically she attached the ordinance of, if I can read this by my eyes, ordinance 2002-26, which was adopted in April of 2002, April, I'm sorry, August 22nd, 2002, where it talks about these particular lots where they were, they were zoned R2 and R3. As I produced, as I produced, and I started inquiring about this, her response was, yes, Mr. Vance, these are correct. They are medium density R2, R3. And she attached the ordinance. But as I read the ordinance, there's nothing that states anything about a 30-foot road frontage. As a builder and developer in 2020 and 2021, I have developed many lots in the city of Stanton, approximately 17. I do pay the facility fees of $15,800, which has been close to almost a half a million dollars on the lots that I have produced, which obviously goes back into the public works. On these particular lots, the one on 903 already has the facility fees of the water and sewer. On 905, if you look at the Google Maps or however, there was a dwelling on 905 that has water, that has public water to that, which means at one point in time, there was a resident that lived there, and they had natural gas, they had water, and they had a septic system. However, 907 did not have anything. So when I started looking into these lots, it was told that I was, that they were zoned R3. I did look into putting in duplexes. And when Mr. Rhodes came back in the last meeting that we had in May, he suggested that because of certain things that go back to single family. And one of the concerns was the safety, and they talked about the the fire trucks and things like that. What they failed to mention is on Driscoll and Palatine, there is a fire hydrant that is sitting there right on the corner, which is allowed. As far as the 10-foot setbacks, the 10-foot easement, I have enough road frontage to give a 25-foot easement to be able to get up in there, which is not, which would still allow me to build a single family house on 903. So the easements are not an issue. Being that I own 17 rental properties in the city of Stanton, I'm building a house on Pine Hill, I'm building a house on Pleasant View, I challenge you to drive up that street and try to get any fire truck or any rescue squad. I also own property on Thompson Street, on Mar Street, on Trout Street, on East Avenue, and also on Stafford. I don't believe if anybody has been through Stafford Street that you cannot get a fire truck down through there without maneuvering. So there's safety issues across the whole entire city of Stanton that we could raise. And as regard as a landowner that wants to produce, I'm not trying to build condominiums for those that may question, I'm not trying to build duplexes. I purchased this property in February of 2021, and under the assumption that according to the ordinance, that I could build multifamily, which is a medium density, which would be a duplex. I did my due diligence. I went and I went to the city council. I got my demolition permit. I tore the buildings down. And then I understand that when Mr. Blair looked at it, he found that there was an unwritten rule about the road frontage. Well, you know, a lot of money later, here we are. And by the way, I'm sort of glad that it has stalled because lumber prices have continued to come down, and it's actually helping me in a little bit. So thank you. But with that being said, they did, I have mowed the yard, okay? As of the drought, it's it's still within city ordinance. I haven't gotten a phone call from Miss Easterling telling me I need to mow my grass. There is a one little pile of dirt that is sitting there that the city of Stanton required me to leave uncovered because they had to see for the demolition permit to be able to see that I capped off the water and sewer lines. And they told me not to put it back in until we file for the building permits, which was denied because of this unwritten law. So therefore, there's no way for me to cover that up because there's no reason for me to do it until we get through this process. So as regard to the flooding, I did call Public Works. There's been no public record of any cause of any flooding. Again, almost 60,000 back on to Palatine Street and Driscoll Street for water frontage or for water and sewer and facility fees that I would have to pay to help those. I just think that we need to look at it as a landowner on those two particular lots where one dwelling is already there, and for whatever reason, in 1969, they took it away. But yet, here we are. So I want to thank you for your time. I know my time is about to run short, but I think as we look at this as a as a future development of the city of Stanton, I like this gentleman's, where are we at with houses? The housing industry? I know where we are as a country. I know where we are as a country, but as far as the housing shortage in the city of Stanton, I believe we're there. And, but I thank you for your time.
Thank you. All right. One last chance.
I do have someone with their hand raised.
All right, let's hear from them.
Caller, if you could identify yourself and where you are.
Allison Profeta, I live on Farrar Court. Can you hear me okay?
Yes.
I just wanted to throw out there to the developer that it sounds like if maybe the city doesn't take the advice of the attorney and pass this ordinance, maybe he could just do what he wants anyway. And then 10 years from now, I'm sure the city will drop any lawsuit they have against him. Because I think that's what happened with the famous wall. So I hope that the city listens to the legal experts at this time. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Anyone else in the audience? Welcome.
My name is Rusty Ashby, 917 Palatine Street. I'm a mayor and member of Stanton City Council. As someone who's shared the responsibilities you share in the county, I'm not here to talk about some of these things that everybody wants to bring up. But my wife and I have been involved with this process since day one. And as she said, when the planning commission chairman said, there's something's not right about this, there's not something right about it. And what I see tonight, if we were just dealing with Palatine, it'd be a whole different issue. Now, somebody sometimes said, well, let's throw all this in and just get it all done. I'm sorry for the things that he may have done. It's just not working out good. But what bothers me is someone, if I was making this decision at the planning commission, the question was asked, what someone else asked up here? Well, how many lots are we talking about? Because the city staff has a lot of responsibility. And I respect Stanton City Council employees here. I know they have a lot of work to do, but they have work to do. Well, 10, maybe 25, well, it could have been 100 lots. Well, over a course of the year, would that even been that mean? I don't know what else would take place. But what we're talking about here tonight is approving something that's going to affect the whole city. Comment was made earlier, dozens of people will benefit if y'all pass this. How many dozens of people are not going to benefit if you approve this? You look at these lots, some of these people, it was handed down or whatever. And I'm sure if the cause is right, the request is right, the process would still work. But when you open up a door like this, people are going to take advantage of it. It's just how it's always worked, and it always will work. Here's the loophole. Let's do this. So yeah, we have a personal interest because we live there, but that's not what I'm speaking about. We've talked to a lot of people, and they're all going to come, but people never come. You know why? Because they trust you all to make the right decision, or they like to watch Wheel of Fortune or Jeopardy or something. But they could be here, and there's a lot of people that are upset about this. And what, you know, when people don't call about the flooding down the basement, because that's how, you know, people in Stanton, they take care of the property. If it's bad, yeah, they call the city and say, I need help. But instead, they go down to the basement with their mops and everything else, and they clean up their own mess. That's Stanton. I'm just asking you, when you vote on this, to remember, it's not Palatine Street that you're voting for or against. It's every citizen in the city of Stanton that is happy with how things are. And I'm sorry that somebody has to come and explain why this is better for the city, and then you vote for it, yes or no. If you don't do that, the administrative people, they're not going to have the same eyeballs looking at this as the citizens coming to speak in the public. So just think about that before you say yes or no to this. It's not to Palatine Street. It's to the cities, the citizens of the entire city of Stanton. So I got like two minutes. I always want to say, I appreciate all you all do. You do a great job. I respect what you do. And the city staff, I would never, ever say anything negative about the staff. Stop and make it work. Don't open a can of worms. Thank you very much.
Thank you. All right. With that, counsel, did you want to hear from, oh, we have more folks that, anyone else?
I do not have anyone.
No hands raised, all right.
Joanne Tiger, 913 North Augusta Street. I do not live on Palatine, but when I first came to Stanton in 1988, I did live on Ramsey Street, a dead-end house, a cracker box house. But I was so proud of it because I wasn't living with my parents with two small children. And if you go down that dead end the other way, leading out, you have to go on Palatine, which was a beautiful street with a wonderful babysitter. Anyway, Palatine, lovely street. Anyway, the point is, this sounds like it needs more research before you make a decision because you've got a lot of conflicting information here. And you've got a lot of hearts involved here. It sounds like you need to know a lot more about how this affects the entire city before you make a decision. So where it doesn't affect me personally, it may affect a whole lot of people. And I ask that you find out how many people this is going to affect before you make a decision. Thank you for listening.
All right, thank you. Anyone?
I do not have anyone with their hands raised.
All right, welcome.
Thank you. My name is Mark Bales. I'm resident at 901 Palatine Street. I'm the neighbor of the property that's being talked about. Have a couple of concerns. One, there's an easement coming up from my land into 903 and 905. It's a single 10-foot easement to get to 903 and 905. So we're talking about one 10-foot easement to two properties. That's a problem. Second thing is, I'm not sure when, I think my research says it was zoned R1 until 2003. Then it was changed to R3. Every place there except for Betsy Bell, there were no apartments there. There are apartments on Betsy Bell. So, but all of the rest of that, Amherst, everything is all single-family homes. Not sure when that changed. The other thing is, I'm hearing that there's an ordinance and a zoning. The zoning has been written for, I don't know how many years now, that it's a 30-foot, you require 30-foot on the road frontage. Is there an ordinance that goes with that that's conflicting? I guess I'm missing something here. Thank you for your time. Appreciate it.
Thank you. All right. With that, I am going to hit the gavel, which will close the public hearing out. And then, counsel, would you like to hear further from Mr. Rhodes? Or if not, I'll entertain a motion. With that, the public hearing is now closed. Counsel, what is your pleasure? Counselor Dole.
I would like to get a summary of what we're actually doing. Because to me, it sounds like we've been not following our own law for decades. I would like for that to stop right now. Because I think we need to follow our own ordinances. But this ordinance is going to allow easements, right? But if you can summarize, or Mr. Rhodes or both can summarize, what is the essence of what we're doing here? Because we've heard all kind of allegations going back and forth. And that's concerning because, you know, are we going to send staff out to, or do we subpoena everybody to find the truth on what's going on with this property? It's a little, you know, hard to tell.
Mr. Rhodes, can you come up front, please?
Well, I'll offer a very brief summary and from the legal perspective. And then have Mr. Rhodes probably give you more of the administrative perspective. But when you ask, what is the true essence of what you're doing? I think it's worth pointing out that had Mr. Rhodes and myself simply followed the practice that had been employed, I think Mr. Rhodes said for decades, three single, or the two lots we're talking about, there would have been a single-family lot on both. There would not have been any public input. There's no current, based on the current practice, there would be no public hearing. And I'll let Mr. Rhodes correct me if I'm wrong when he speaks, but there would be no public input on that. The fact is, the practice had been, until we got here, that if you had these lots and you could demonstrate there was an easement, if you had a landlocked lot that didn't have the 30 feet of street frontage, but you had an easement, you were allowed to build one single-family dwell. The essence of what this amendment does is that it codifies that practice that's been in place for decades, per Mr. Rhodes. That in effect, the public has a right to know, and the council has a right, as a democratic republic that we are, that these should be, we should not be going against what is on the books in the city code. We should have the council enact an ordinance to either codify the practice or not. But that's the essence, as I see it, that there had been a practice that even though it goes against what's in the city code, there would have been a single-family dwelling if there was a 10-foot easement on both of these lots. And I'll turn it over to Mr. Rhodes.
I'm not sure I have anything to add. It's Mr. Blair's statement. I think he correctly summarized the issue before you tonight. I'd be glad to try to answer any questions you have, though.
Any questions? Counselor Holmes.
Listen, he talking about building three homes.
In this particular area, the developer owns three lots. One of them has more than 30 feet of road frontage. So he could have applied for a house on that, or a two-family dwelling on that three, four months ago, but he wanted to do them all at the same time. So that is not, that particular lot's not impacted by this proposed amendment. That would, that's a legal lot that meets all the zoning code requirements. So this is about two additional lots.
Now, do they get ingress through the same? Give me the addresses and explain how these relate to one another. The one that has the legal right to build is what number?
I'm here to talk about the amendment. And, you know, not specifics about the subdivision. I believe that is 903, 903, which did have a house on it up until, you know, two, three months ago.
And then the one beside that has at one time had a house on it?
According to the developer, I'm not aware of that, sir.
And, and it, does it have 30-foot access?
It does not have any street frontage, no, sir.
None at all.
No, sir. It has easements.
And then the third lot is behind that?
I believe those are kind of side by side, behind the lot that fronts on Palatine Street.
It's built like a, just like a little T-road, just goes back and then goes to the other two lots in the back.
Well, I wouldn't call it a road. They could, if this is.
A drive or something.
It is my, they would need to provide a 10-foot easement for each of those two lots. And so basically, they have driveways to those two housing sites.
Counselor Dole.
Now, the developer said that he had enough frontage, he could provide a 25-foot easement, which would be a 25, it could be a 25-foot driveway or space for emergency vehicles or whatever going up there. Is that, does that seem accurate?
He does, since he owns a lot that fronts on the, on Palatine Street. He could provide additional easements to those two lots in the back. Staff was looking at this as a driveway, basically. Yes, we were only recommending 10 feet, which seems kind of standard for a driveway. We're not trying to confuse that with a, with a road, though. And understand that there's lots of driveways in the city that are difficult for fire and rescue to navigate. A lot of times, they can just do it from the public streets. But this would be no different than that, except maybe they'd be further back from the road, since they are landlocked.
Counselor Holmes.
Rodney, and if you had a landlocked piece of property, it would have to have at least a 10-foot easement before it could be developed. Is that correct?
The proposed amendment, yes, sir, would require a minimum of 10 feet.
Any other questions?
Well, as long as they're single house, single homes, you know, that, it makes a lot more sense. I mean, as long as you weren't trying to put multiple, like apartments or duplexes or stuff like that, it sounds like it would make sense to be able to develop this land because it's definitely going to increase our tax rate. I mean, be able to collect home insurance, not insurance, but taxes on the property. And plus, it'd be water and sewer. But I wouldn't be for, like, any major, like, complexes, like apartment complexes or anything like that.
Is counsel ready to take action on this, or is there an interest to table it? For further information, Counselor Dole.
I move the counsel adopt the ordinance and approve the amendment as recommended by the planning commission.
The motion on the floor, is there a second?
I second it.
Counselor Meade is second. Any further discussion? Well, for me, when it comes down to the issues, it should never be about the bureaucrats, but it should be about the people, so. Mrs. Enney, please call the roll.
Mr. Holmes.
Aye.
Ms. Darby.
No.
Vice Mayor Robertson.
No.
Ms. Dole.
Aye.
Mr. Claffey.
No.
Mayor Oakes.
No.
Ms. Meade.
Aye.
Motion fails.
All right, thank you. Thank you.
I want to ensure that we're not going to go against our ordinance, which means that this developer has spent a lot of money for land that he's not going to be able to use. So, you know, you do what you need to do.
Within the law.
Just so you know, I did contact the city attorney in Richmond. And because it's not in the ordinance, just so you know, thank you.
Right, thank you, sir. All right, thank you for everyone's patience. The next item is item B, a public hearing. Public hearing in consideration of an ordinance to amend section 18.215.020, application of chapter 18.215, amendments of Title 18 zoning of the Stanton City Code to align with the Code of Virginia. Ms. Bowery-Gard.
Thank you. And again, Rodney Rose, our senior planner, will take the lead on this issue.
Thank you. This is basically a house cleaning matter. The city attorney and Mr. Blair brought to my attention that this section of the zoning code, of the city code, does not conform with the Code of Virginia. And obviously, we must conform with the Code of Virginia. And this in regards to who may initiate a zoning ordinance amendment or rezoning. So Mr. Blair has come up, drafted the proposed language that corresponds to the Virginia Code. I would note, for some strange reason, the city code says that city council may not initiate those changes, which is, I'm not sure how the language got in there, because it's, obviously, city council does have that authority. So I'd be glad to answer any questions you have at this time or after you conduct a public hearing.
All right, any questions? Okay, I'm not going to read this again. Basically, it's the same drill. When I hit the gavel, that'll open up the public hearing. We'll alternate. We'll start with the citizens out in the audience first, and then the Zoom callers. You have five minutes. Please state your name, your address. And if you're a Zoom caller, please raise your hand if you would like to speak concerning this matter, this public hearing matter. With that, the public hearing is now open. Would anyone in the audience like to address the counsel? Mrs. Enney, do we have any hands raised on Zoom?
I do not have anyone's hand raised.
Anyone else? With that, the public hearing is now closed. I'll entertain a motion from counsel.
Madam Mayor.
Vice Mayor Robertson.
I move the counsel adopt the ordinance and approve the amendment as.
I move the council adopt the ordinance and approve the amendment as recommended by the planning commission.
We have a motion on the floor. Is there a second?
A second. Mr. Terry Holmes.
Right. Councilor Holmes is second. Any further discussion? Councilor Dole?
I'll point out that the last public hearing and consideration of an ordinance was also recommended by the planning commission. So, but I guess if you don't have friends that are interested in this one, the vote will be pretty easy.
All right. Are there any other comments? Mrs. Zinni, please call the roll.
Ms. Darby?
Aye.
Mayor Oaks?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Robertson?
Aye.
Mr. Holmes?
Aye.
Ms. Mead?
Aye.
Ms. Dole?
Aye.
Mr. Claffey?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you. All right. The next item is item C, a consideration of ordinance to amend the FY 2022 budget ordinance for the city of Stanton by adding budget amendment number one. Ms. Bow regard.
I'm Phil Treyer tonight, so I'm going to walk quickly through this item. Yes, but he's on vacation thing, so he's having a great time. So budget amendment number one totals $7,700,360. We had a required public hearing at our last meeting on June 24th, which was properly advertised. Here's the breakout of that budget amendment. City portion, which is general fund and all other funds, is 7.6 million and the school portion is 54,000 and some change. Here's a few details of that. 6.54 million in the general funds include 6.47 million in American Rescue Plan Act funding, which is half of the funds that we will receive from ARPA, $41,864 to appropriate additional state support for the, in a local match for the Office of the Register, ARPA Wages and Benefits, and $24,000 to break out the Reservoir Hill cell phone tower rental income from the T-Mobile billing invoice. And you'll hear about the telephone charges further down as well. In the water fund appropriations, we have 1.1 million for the Clearwell tank repairs and $4,266 in telephone expense appropriation. We have $372 in the sewer fund for telephone expenditures, $251 in the environmental fund for the same purpose, and $94 in the stormwater fund, also for telephone expenditures. And finally, $54,226 in the education fund appropriation for a school improvement grant in the amount of $50,000 and $4,266 for telephone expenditures. That is the breakdown of the amendment and you will do the final consideration this evening of the budget amendment number one.
All right. Any questions for Ms. Bow regard? Harry Nunn, I'll entertain a motion.
Eric.
Councilor Darby?
I move to adopt an ordinance amending the fiscal year 2022 budget by adding budget amendment number one totaling $7,700,360 as presented.
We have a motion on the floor. Is there a second?
Madam Mayor, I'll second that.
Councilor Claffey has second. Any further discussion? Harry Nunn, Mrs. Zinni, please call the roll.
Ms. Dole?
Aye.
Ms. Darby?
Aye.
Mr. Holmes?
Aye.
Ms. Mead?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Robertson?
Aye.
Mr. Claffey?
Aye.
Mayor Oaks?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you. All right. The next item is item D, a consideration of a revised master plan for the villages of Stanton. Ms. Bow regard.
And the Rodney Rhodes Show continues.
Welcome back, Mr. Rhodes.
Thank you. I'll be very brief with this one because as you know, Mr. Robin Miller, during your work session, provided an update on the villages' development to this point and what is being proposed. I would remind council that this property was rezoned in 2005 to traditional neighborhood development infill district, which is designed to allow the developer considerable flexibility on a specific site. This is the second time that the developer has requested amendment to the master plan. In this proposal, he's requesting to assign uses to two existing buildings, which were previously not addressed on the master plan, as well as the construction of five new buildings. All of these would be for residential use with a total square footage of about 200,000 square feet. The proposed changes will provide flexibility for residential development without reducing commercial space that's currently shown on the master plan. The planning commission reviewed this request on their June 15, 2021 meeting, and on a 4-0 vote unanimously recommended approval of the proposed revision. Likewise, the Economic Development Authority recommended at their June 22, 2021 meeting, on a 6-0 vote, they recommend approval of the proposed revisions also. This is not a public hearing. I'd be glad to take any questions you have at this time. Or Mr. Miller is still here in attendance. If you have any further questions for him.
Any questions for Mr. Rhodes or Mr. Miller? Harry Nunn, I'll entertain a motion.
Madam Mayor.
Councilor Claffey?
I move the city council approve the Western State redevelopment master plan dated August 4, 2005, amended March 4, 2015, and further amended May 18, 2021, as recommended by the planning commission and the Economic Development Authority.
All right. We have a motion on the floor. Is there a second?
Madam Mayor.
Vice Mayor Robertson?
I will second that.
All right. We have a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, Ms. Zinni, please call the roll.
Ms. Mead?
Aye.
Ms. Dole?
Aye.
Mayor Oaks?
Aye.
Mr. Claffey?
Aye.
Ms. Darby?
Aye.
Ms. Holmes?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Robertson?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you. All right. The next item is item E, a consideration of an ordinance to amend section 6.15.040, notice required at place of sale of chapter 6.15, wild and exotic animals of title six, animals and fowl of the Stanton City Code to conform with section 6.15.010. This item was taken off of the work session and the discussion was added to the regular meeting and the consideration will also take place tonight as well. Ms. Bow regard.
Yes. Mr. John Blair will take the lead on this item.
Mr. Blair.
Good evening, Mayor Oaks and council. Before you tonight, in December of 2020, you amended part of the animal control code concerning the definition of wild and exotic animal. Additionally, in the code, as we were looking at it, the section before you, 6.15.040, had the old definition of wild and exotic animal. So this is an amendment to conform 6.15.040 to 6.15.010. Councilor Dole did contact me and I do want to make it clear for the public, the possession of exotic animals in Virginia is still subject to permitting requirements from the Virginia Department of Wildlife Resources. And as you snake your way to the end of the agenda, I'll turn it over to council for any questions you may have.
Out of order. Joking, joking. We're getting punchy. Thank you. Thank you. Any questions for Mr. Blair?
And after that.
Okay. So, Mr. Blair, when I read this, it said if the animal is bred in captivity, that that does make a difference compared to if it's just captured in the wild? Can you explain that?
Correct. Well, that is, but again, that is also, even if bred in captivity, if it's a wild or exotic animal, it would still be subject to those permitting requirements from the state.
Well, my cat thinks she's a puma.
Okay.
All right. Any additional questions or comments? Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion.
Madam Mayor.
Councilor Holmes?
I move the city council adopt an ordinance amending section 6.15.040, notice required at place of sale of chapter 6.15, wild and exotic animals of the title six, animals and fowl of the Stanton City Code is proposed to conform with the language and the Stanton City Code 6.15.010.
So we have a motion on the floor. Is there a second?
Madam Mayor.
Vice Mayor Robertson?
I will second that.
All right. We have a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, Ms. Zinni, please call the roll.
Mr. Claffey?
Aye.
Ms. Darby?
Aye.
Mayor Oaks?
Aye.
Ms. Mead?
Ms. Dole?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Robertson?
Aye.
Mr. Holmes?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you. We can say, see you later, alligator, to that action item. Yeah, the attorney can do it. All right. The next item is item F, a consideration of city council procedure memorandum number three amendments. Ms. Bow regard.
I will also invite John Blair to take this one away.
Good evening again, Mayor Oaks and council. As I discussed at the work session, the, I'll briefly summarize the two changes before you are to allow up to six meetings per year for personal reasons in which a counselor may participate remotely. Additionally, a counselor may participate remotely in an unlimited number of meetings concerning their care of a family member for a physical illness. These are, again, amendments that became effective to the Freedom of Information Act on July 1 of this year, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
All right. Any questions for Mr. Blair? Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion.
Madam Mayor.
Vice Mayor Robertson?
I move to adopt the proposed amendments to the Stanton City Council Procedure Memorandum Number Three.
All right. We have a motion on the floor. Is there a second?
Madam Mayor.
Vice Mayor, Councilor Claffey?
Second.
We have a second. Any further discussion? Hearing then, Ms. Zinni, please call the roll.
Mr. Holmes?
Aye.
Mr. Claffey?
Aye.
Mayor Oaks?
Aye.
Ms. Dole?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Robertson?
Aye.
Ms. Mead?
Aye.
Ms. Darby?
Aye.
Motion passes.
Thank you. That takes us to matters from the assistant city manager, Ms. Bow regard.
I really don't have any updates, but I would just like to draw your attention to the city grants update that's on at the end of the regular agenda. This is our attempt to fulfill the requirements of that memoranda, memorandum. And if you have any questions, please let me know or if there's, if the information is not sufficient enough. But we thought the name of the grant, the department and the amount. And again, these are grants that do not require a local match. Of course, any grant that does require a local match has always come to city council for your approval. So if you like that format, great. If you have suggestions, please let me know and we'd be happy to make adjustments in the future.
All right. Thank you. All right. Next is matters from the public. I'm going to have to read to you guys again. Matters from the public. This is part of city council's agenda is entitled Matters from the Public. It is a time that council sets aside to hear from citizens and others about a wide variety of subjects. Before we begin, I'd like to share five basic ground rules that we ask you to respect as you make your remarks. One, please come to the podium or begin your call, identify yourself, and complete your remarks within five minutes. I will let you know when you've reached your five minutes. We ask that you please give your name, your address, and keep your remarks at five minutes or less. When you reach the five-minute time limit, I will let you know that your time limit has expired. If you continue to speak, I will ask you to step away from the podium or to end your call. If you continue to speak after I inform you that you have exceeded your time limit, I will again ask you to please stop speaking and step away from the podium or end your call. If you still continue to speak, I will ask the clerk of council to end your call or if you continue to speak from the podium, you may be charged with disorderly conduct under Virginia Code section 18.2-415A2. A violation of Virginia Code section 18.2-415A2 can result in penalties, up to one year in jail and/or a fine up to 2,500. Two, this is a time for us as council to simply listen to your remarks. In an effort to encourage and maintain orderly conduct, we will not engage or be give and take debate. If you are seeking information, you may mention it during your remarks and the city manager or his staff may get in touch with you in the days ahead. Three, we ask that you direct your comments to council as a whole and not to identify members of council or to identify employees of the city. If you want to take up an issue with an individual member of council or an employee, please speak with us before or after the meeting. We are also accessible by phone, mail, or email. Again, we ask that you direct your comments to the council as a whole. Four, we expect every speaker to be civil and courteous. Using profanity, making personal attacks on an individual unrelated to the performance of their official duties on behalf of the city of Stanton and doing anything that is disruptive to the orderly conduct of this meeting will not be tolerated. Five, finally, as the presiding officer, it is my duty to remind you that if you choose not to abide by these ground rules, I may find that you are out of order and will ask you to withdraw from the podium or to end your call. We certainly do not want to reach that point and even beyond, so we respectfully ask for your full cooperation in observing these guidelines. If you wish, you may obtain a copy of the ground rules from our clerk of council, Ms. Zinni. And now we welcome all speakers. The podium is now available for matters from the public as well as remote participation using Zoom platform. And Ms. Bow regard, they do not need to raise their hand on Zoom, correct?
Well, they do if we want to call on them to speak. So yes, they should, if they want to speak at matters from the public, they should raise their hand.
Okay. So you do still need to raise your hand if you're on Zoom. Please raise your hand so we'll know that you want to speak under matters from the public. We will start with members of the audience first and we'll alternate. All right. Anyone in the audience who'd care to speak? Please state your name and your address and keep your comments at five minutes or less. Welcome.
My name is Albino Albert Fossa. My folks came and met at Ford 01 Bowling Street. My folks came from Italy, northern Italy, in 1930 for a better life for themselves and for their children. I have a problem today. The problem is with respect to assessments from the real estate. I wanted to have a meeting, in fact, from with the appeals board. They gave me one date, seven days before the meeting. I checked my calendar and I had some date, that particular date that they gave me, I had a date that was there on the calendar for seven weeks. I called, I went to see Mr. Henney and I said to him, I cannot make that meeting because I have this other meeting. Could you make an alternate date? No alternate date was ever made. I said, and so I decided that the only choice I had was to go through channels to see whether or not I can get a meeting. I went to the Mr. Henney and Henley, rather, and Mr. Rosenberg, and we had a meeting and nothing was resolved. I then went to the courts and I spoke to Mr. Landis, who was a representative or the clerk of the court, and nothing was resolved there. He said, speak to Mr. Voli. I went to Mr. Voli and nothing was resolved there. I said, how can, I want a meeting with these people because the thing is controlled, the board is, the appeal board is controlled by the realities, people. Every person on that board is a realtor and their assessments that they have given to me are out of order. I have books, I have papers here and a ton of papers that show that those people who have very, very wealthy houses, there has been no rise at all in their assessments, even though inflation occurred at 5% or more. There should have been some kind of increase there. Most, a good many of them had decreases, even though inflation is 5%. At the same time, the people who are in the middle, pages and pages of people who struggle, who work, who don't use, don't benefit by government surpluses or government contributions and so forth, who work for their houses and so forth, their assessments went up by 10, 20, 30, sometimes 40%. At one time in 2016, my assessment was 164%. They assessed my house. I was going to complain then, but my son said, forget it. Pay the bills. Forget it. You're not going to get anywhere. This past year, it went up by over 15%. I asked Mr. Henley, how? And he gave me some information, but the information had no relevancy to the, my facility, which was like, most of his comparisons were with a two-story house versus a one-story house. I have a basement that has snakes- I have a basement that has snakes in it, and it's, was a coral space, and I dug out the dirt and so forth. It was all burnt up at one time. I put it back together again to some degree with lumber that was gotten from the landfill. It's not, it's, it's a house, you walk around in it, you bounce. It's within 13 feet of the railroad, and the noise is absolutely incredible sometimes, and the vibrations, well, I had vibration, I had a shelf with Kentucky Derby glasses on it, and the next thing I didn't, I guess I didn't fix it right or something, I didn't put a guard in front of it, and a number of them were bounced off and broken. This is a problem. And then, the other problem is that the people in the middle who work the hardest, because they don't get any real benefits.
Sorry, your time is up.
Okay. I'd like a meeting with the.
Your time is up, thank you. All right, anyone raising their hand on Zoom?
I do not have anyone with their hand raised.
Thank you. Anyone else in the audience that would like to speak?
My name is Baldwin Jennings, 332 Sharon Lane, Stanton. Approximately, it's been maybe 10 days now, so, I was in, at my home, I got out of my car, I started up the walkway, and I tripped, and I fell backwards. And I, I knew I was falling, and I knew enough to tuck my head forth as you fall backwards, which is towards doing my football-playing days. And anyway, I turned over, and I could not get up. I was there, and I, you know, I was laying there, and I couldn't get, I tried to crawl, I couldn't get my feet on the crawl, I couldn't, couldn't move at all, so I got, I was able to get my cell phone out. I called 911, and they connected me with Stanton Fire Department. They sent a fire truck over with three men on, got me up, got me in my house, seen I settled down and everything, and I definitely want the fire chief and to know from my part, they did a great job, they did, I mean, I had enough time since and it's thing about, they did everything exactly right, and I want to commend them for their training and the service they give this community. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Glad you're here.
Baldwin. Any callers?
I do have a hand-raised caller, if you could identify yourself and state your residence.
Allison Profeta, I live on Farrier Court. I'm calling to thank city council for having that presentation earlier about the Airbnbs. It was really informative, and I'm calling to encourage you to continue that conversation. I know that my suggestions, if you were to take them, would probably not be fitting into one meeting, but if over the course of several meetings, you could perhaps have someone present about overall data and statistics on housing in Stanton, including information from Stanton Redevelopment and Housing Authority and Habitat for Humanity, an overview on properties that are receiving low-income tax credits in the city, how Stanton's housing market compares to other localities in the area, how the pandemic has impacted the housing market, including the rental market, and I think also it would be incredibly impactful if each of you reached out to your own community members that you know of, and invite one person to share their story about trying to get housing here in Stanton. If you've spent any amount of time on social media lately, over the past couple of months, you'll see a troubling pattern of families and residents desperately trying to find somewhere to live in the city, and it's enough that it's really concerning to see a pattern like that, and I would love for city council to, to continue looking into this and learning about it, because it's helpful to the community as a whole, as well as to all of you, if there comes a time where you could possibly do something to improve the housing situation here in Stanton. So, thank you, and also, I hope that Mr. Jennings is feeling better, and I hope that he gets one of those things that you could push the button if you fall again. Thank you.
Good idea. Thank you. Anyone from the public care to speak? All right, any callers?
I do not have any hands raised.
With that, as the mayor of the city of Stanton, I now call this meeting adjourned.